We do have one.
Thank you.
So we're there. Yeah, sorry, I forgot to.
It's okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Just do it.
Okay, all right. First up, consider proposed revisions to the watershed protection ordinance map.
Of the first and only kind of. Been some times since like. Adjusted our map to all annexed areas. Did a map in those in 2015. This time around. Yeah, go with one. One more. On this exhibit here. Purpose was that there were two properties within our watershed protection. Ordinance map history. Those annexed in in that period. And since they were annexed in, they needed to be added to the map. In addition, we had two more annexations that they were actually outside in MS4. Shade protection that the county maintains for us. So the two properties, the one that you would write down is right off. It's the towns at Belmont, the apartment complex. Up there in the south of Wilkinson Boulevard. That property's been brought in. And then the other one is down across the street from the middle school. That's called Smith Farm. It's residential lots in town. And that was annexed in also. Because they went through the annexation. Were required to meet all our watershed ordinance requirements. So they are in good shape there. And they're both under construction. So this is a good time to do it. The other two parcels, I said, they're down there bottom. Since part three and four, those are out Nixon Road. And like I said, they fall under the county. Shade protection. I didn't put that on.
Yeah.
Any case, this has to be the. Has to be watershed. Council is the watershed board, so that's why we chose to have it right before. And if you approve that we make these changes to the map. It will go on as an agenda item on our regular agenda. You'll have to do a public hearing on this. Presumably, if anybody needed to, they signed up for that. And then after that, there's an ordinance yet to pass. Putting that as another agenda item on the regular agenda. And then once that's done, I send it off to the state and I say, here, here it is. Here's our changes. You guys agree? And they go, yep. And then they send us a letter back into our official document. So it's just a mechanical process. We have to go keep up to date with our ordinance. Anybody have any questions?
Do you need a vote on that?
We need a vote for the watershed board.
I'll move to approve the amendments to the map. Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, thank you.
All right, if there is no consensus for the watershed review board, I'll enter the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will now call the city council meeting to order. For the national order to add agenda. All right, and we'll move into the work session.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. Before you get the consent agenda, you have seven items. And I'll go down through these lines quickly. Item number one is the approval of the special meeting minutes from September 13th. And item number two is an approval of an ordinance authorizing possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages. During the art in the village reception program. That is, that will be held at Old City Hall. They're just serving alcoholic beverages. They're not actually selling them. Item number three is acceptance of streets in Plain South Shore Base 2A, maps 1, 2. And the streets for acceptance are Landyard Lane, Metairie Drive, Burnley Court. And these items have been inspected by our city staff regarding the streets and the curving sidewalks and storm drainage. Item number four is acceptance in McLean Overlook Base 2 there. And the streets for acceptance are Kingfisher Way and Overlook Drive. And in similar fashion, our staff has checked the streets, curving sidewalks, and storm drainage. And they have been found to be complying with city standards at this time. Item number five, I request that we remove the approval of a street lighting agreement with Greystone Estates HOA. Staff is in further discussions with the HOA, so I would recommend that that item be removed. And we'll bring that forward to later date. Item number six is approval of amendments to the City of Belmont Solicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Ordinance regarding the storm warning permit. And inside your agenda packet is the actual ordinance with the recommended changes highlighted. And then item number seven is an approval of an ordinance to close portions of multiple streets over the 23rd for the Turkey Day 5K. And there is a map that shows various streets that will be impacted on that day between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. for the Turkey Day 5K. And those are the seven items, which did remove one item, so six items for this session.
I have just a couple of questions. On the item of the street lighting agreement out of it. I just was wondering how it got on the consent agenda, if there was no reading of the minds with respect to the agreement.
Staff had been discussing the agreement with HOA board and thought, I believe, it feels out there. Maybe I'll step up and explain how you got to this point. But it was put on the agenda, thinking that they were good with the actual agreement. And then there was questions as far as like, how far we go back as far as payment.
Yeah, that's not your description. So I was discussing with the president, new town president of the HOA board. And this is standard agreement. We've seen him before come across for a vote. And I reached an agreement with that board member saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and put this on the consent agenda so we can get an approval in place, so we can start reimbursing the community for the street lighting. And when I sent it to them for review, they had a few just changes. And then they determined that they didn't like the agreement and they would want to discuss it a little further. I think it was specific note, they were concerned about one of the clauses dealing with paying past reimbursements for previous this few years. So that was kind of, I was kind of surprised by that. So I reached out to them and we scheduled another meeting to meet with them, to finalize and discuss, to make sure we're all on the same page and they have a clear understanding of what the agreement means. So that's kind of the story.
Just for clarification, do I understand correctly that the city was previously reimbursing the HOA and then as of like five years ago or so, that stopped?
I can't answer that completely accurately because we don't have records that go back that far. We did see within our first order system some indication that we had paid in the past. But in searching for an agreement, I wasn't able to find one. And the HOA wasn't able to find one either. Which is why I wanted to take a step to get an agreement in place, so it was at least there. So we're certainly going to have to discuss that further with the HOA.
That sounds like fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
My only other question was with the alcohol in the Old City Hall. I was a bit confused based on reading the ordinance, whether they were selling or not. So it seems as though they're not selling. There's some passages in the ordinance were asked to approve that refer to vendors. And that would, I guess, be inappropriate if they're not selling. Would that be correct?
I believe that is correct, sir. That they will be not selling the alcohol, but if.
Bill? Bill, a new good step up to the mic, please.
So over the last couple of years, Main Street MBA has collaborated and worked more with the Gaston County Arts Council to bring more arts and culture into downtown at some of our events. Last year, they set up and did during our Christmas Village, an art opening where they had a lot of art that they were selling. And so we were doing that again. But what the request was for the night before, the Friday night before the Saturday Christmas Village, that they have a reception and invite the community leaders, council to come in. And it would just be serving wine as you come around and look at the art. So they would not be selling it. So most of art openings, you do get a glass of wine when you walk around up at the art. So that's basically what they're working to do.
And that was specific in the actual letter from Gaston County Ordinance. It says, we do not charge entry fees or charge for the wine.
Okay, I was just, I read that and then I was confused by the language of the ordinance. Talk about vendors and selling tickets and stuff, so that was all.
Wine.
Okay.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, move into the regular meeting and call us to order. Jim, would you mind leading us in prayer and mark with a little flag?
Well, let us bow our heads, Heavenly Father. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on our wonderful community and making it such a great place to live. Please give those present tonight the wisdom and prudence to make wise decisions on behalf of the city. And to continue making Belmont such a great place to live. And bless all of those traveling to and from this meeting and all of those speaking tonight that we do all of this in your name. Amen.
Join me for the pledge.
By the wings of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have several recognitions and acknowledgements tonight. First up is former interim, actually former city manager Barry Webb. Okay. We've got a lovely picture of downtown in gratitude for the service that you provided us. Most of it blocked, a good chunk of this year and part of last year when we were in need of your services. So appreciate you stepping in and doing that for us and setting us up for success.
This is really nice.
I'm going to get you guys closer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. I really do appreciate this, but what I really want to say is that there are a number of other people out here that really need to be thanked, that I depended on during the time I was here. Because as I said to some of you, when I committed to the time availability that I had, I didn't realize, quickly came to find out, that wasn't enough time for the level of work that was going on. So it's really the other people here, and I don't want to leave anybody out. I mean, it was all the department heads, management staff, Phil, Captain, Chief Hollis, Chief Davis, I bet, Jerry. But just because of the logistics, I really need to particularly thank because they were there for me. Everybody that I was there helping. Kevin, Jamie, Jared, Bill, Tiffany. I mean, if it wasn't for them, things would have ground to a halt. So they're really the ones, I'm going to take this and keep this. They're the ones that also need to thanks, and I certainly thank them. I thank you all, I enjoyed my time back with you, and parks.
You're not going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I would really like to, I'm sure I have somewhere to eat.
Thank you. All right, we also have a proclamation for pedestrian safety month.
Do you agree with it or do you?
How timely.
Yes, it is very timely. I was quite excited when they brought this to me. I'll go ahead and do it. Yeah, definitely. Okay. Whereas every October, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration celebrates National Pedestrian Safety Month. Whereas walking is a healthy mode of travel, is environmentally friendly, and it's pedestrian mobility plans. The city of Belmont has embraced the principle that people should be able to safely circulate throughout the community in a safe manner. Whereas walkability is a positive attribute of our community and the city of Belmont is committed to safe and convenient mobility for all. Whereas during this era of economic hardship and climate change, walking in our neighborhoods is a valuable option for healthy and family-friendly activity. And a safe pedestrian environment can support economic development and local businesses. Whereas we are all pedestrians from time to time, it is important to pay attention to what is going on around us. And drivers must remember that crosswalks existed every intersection, whether painted or not, and be vigilant to ensure the safety of pedestrians. Whereas the city recognizes the efforts from Belmont Planning and Zoning, Police, and Parks and Recreation Departments in promoting the benefits of walking as a form of healthy recreation and an active mode of transportation to commute to school and work. Now therefore, I, Mark Sealer, Mayor of the City of Belmont, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 in the city of Belmont as Walktober and Pedestrian Safety Month, and urge that we all rededicate ourselves to enjoying the benefits of walking and ensuring the safety of pedestrians in our community. All right. And now we've got one recognizing our planning staff for Community Planning Month. Do we have anything to give them or is it just a?
No.
Okay, all right. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. Whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that serve the future of their community. Whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and planning implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. Whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Belmont. Whereas we recognize many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the Charlotte region. Extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, it is resolved that the month of October 2023 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Belmont in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. If I just have recognized the planning staff, if they're here. I know there are at least a couple because you're on the agenda later. Oh, just didn't mean. That's okay. All right, there we go. All right, I move. Okay. All right. So I will now entertain a motion to set the agenda.
So who?
So. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B5, the street lighting agreement, which is deferred until such time as the agreement is formalized finally.
I'll second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need a public comment. First up is Larry Mathis. He had three minutes and there's a little light, a light working, correct? Okay, there should be a light on the podium that will, or you can do that too.
Appreciate you letting me speak today. So Larry Mathis, 103 Evergreen Lane, Belmont's Drug Lot. I've been here about 23 years now. I'm a maybe veteran, eight years. Paved with a military background, a member of the American Legion. So veterans, kind of, you know, touch it. Recently, I saw some programs. One's Honored Your DNA, another by Memorial Day. And what they are is clean the headstones and footstones of veterans. There's a lot out there that Civil War, World War II, you can't even read them. There's a program, please, that cleans stones. Why I like to start a program here. It's not something one person can do. I'd like to start maybe a nonprofit group or something. And get the backing from the council or the city or something. Not in any form of money, but to help sell this up. And I would go to like the Boy Scouts or maybe they could do part of the project. RMTC, American Legion, different groups, you know, the sponsor group. It'd all be funded by donation. I'd like to start with Greenwood Cemetery and spread out from there until eventually to the old county. So it's a large undertaking. It's not something that one or two people going out there cleaning the dead. So it's something I'd like to start here in Belmont. So like I said, I'm not asking for money, just support, upset everything up. Maybe, you know, work with it, to have special days that groups can come or individuals. Money would go to buy supplies. There's a solution called D2 solution. It's the only one that's been approved by the government to use at national cemeteries. You can't buy it at Walmart or Home, but I found a place where I feel I can get it. I bought some of it. And I cleaned some of my white family stones that were real old. So what it is for the solution, bottles, brushes, you don't need pressure washers, you don't need bleach, steel brushes, anything like that. Just non-brushes, water, and the solution. So that's something that I would like to get started here in Belmont and spread out. And if anyone knows how to help set this up or work it or whatever, I really appreciate it.
Question?
Yes.
What was the name of the national group that you said that kind of started this?
Well, I found two groups online, one is Honored Your DNA. And another one is by Memorial Day. And they were trying to get them over the whole country by Memorial Day. And I saw this a few months ago and talked to a couple about cemetery here and had to get permission. And we can't go in there and start doing it. And there's a lot of videos showing how they do it. I've done the same thing on my thing. I live for grandparents, that you can hear and read them. And it's a safe solution. And there's a lot of videos about how they do it. And like I said, different groups, it's projects, individuals. I know we have certain cleaning days and everything, so they set up that, do some fundraising, and all be by donations.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. Thank you. Next we have Danielle Van Hirden. Just direct to the stage, your claim and address.
Sure. Hello, my name is Danielle Van Hirden. I live at 4205 Portland Lane in Belmont. Okay, so I'm going to start by reading a little bit of this. Okay, I'm here today to address the reoccurring problem, meaning it's happened more than once in more than one year, for the age divisions for the boys versus the girls leagues for the sports in Belmont Parks and Recs. Four years ago, I was sitting in Zipstro's office because the girls' age divisions for soccer were every three years versus the boys' age divisions for every two years. After initial discussions, which were brushed off and completely brushed aside, followed by more threatening discussions, the age divisions were finally changed to every two years for the girls. The mentality from the Belmont Parks and Recs Department was that the city of Belmont residents did not have enough active participation to fill the girls' league with the two-year age divisions. The results after the correction was made to the two-year age divisions were, we filled the entire girls' league. It is now 2023, and here I am. I cannot tell you my irritation, disappointment, and frustration that I had to fight for equal rights for young females in Belmont for every single sport. Last year, I had to fight to get the basketball age divisions down to two years. And our excuse was, hey, oh, we play in Gastonia, so it's actually Gastonia. I went to Gastonia City Council and I got that changed to every two years. So then I got it changed here to every two years because of that. And so, lo and behold, I go to sign up my girls for basketball this year, we're back at every three years. I look at the Gastonia Parks and Recs website, back to every three years. So I call them up and I say, hey, I'm done playing. I am going to do something about this. These girls deserve two-year age divisions. You have a seven to nine-year-old age division. That is a first grader playing against a fourth grader. That is wrong. They deserve to have parity with the boys. So the girls' age divisions need to match the boys' age divisions. Every two years. Because I can tell you right now, my kids have moved on to club and they can manage every one year. And there is such a difference in the skill level for even a single solitary year. So forcing our girls to play every three years is criminal. That's all I have. You ready for your turn?
Thank you. Next is Justin McConnell.
Hello, my name is Justin McConnell. I'm a member of the Morgan Branch HOA and I live at 108 Morgan Branch Road. Back in 2019, I moved into the neighborhood and we started to notice a foul sewer smell. Very thick, especially in the evening. So I've gone to the planning director, who is Shelley DeHart at the time. I still have the emails from her. And I was told that due to low occupancy in the neighborhood, that low flow was the problem. It's been four years later, neighborhood has filled up. We still have this problem. We have people come out, seems like almost quarterly to check it and look into this problem. Put enzymes in there and tried to stop the smell. I don't know if it's the distance or from the water treatment plant or the elevation or what it is, but we'd like to find out if we can get the city to do something about this smell in our neighborhood. And that's all I have. Thank you.
We can get direction. Yeah, yeah. Tiffany, Bill, is it possible to get like an update on that, if maybe later date or something, to understand what's going on in that? Because I have heard that before and I have actually smelled that myself down there. So I would be curious if there's an update on that one.
Sure, I don't have any update at this time, but I'll have to do some research and try to figure out what the conversation's going on. Okay.
And we're getting direction. We definitely want to look into what Danielle said. She and I talked last year and she contacted me again. This time I asked her to come and speak because this way we would go ahead and be able to address it. Because the Title IX and all the other things that you're trying to buy parity for females, that is really not acceptable. So if, while our staff will do that, make sure we guys know it. I appreciate it.
All right, so move along to item number two, which is a public hearing on the senior import of housing tax amendment.
I'll move, go into public hearing.
Second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, City Council. This item is text amendment twenty twenty-three point zero three, for senior in support of housing. So, how do we get started? I just wanted to provide a bit of background to this conversation about where we started and potentially have a discussion this evening about where we should go as a city. So, a little bit of background, back in January of twenty twenty-three, City Council adopted text amendment twenty twenty-two point zero five, which restricted the apartment building form to the highway, commercial and institutional campus district zones. As a reminder, chapter four of our land development code defines what qualifies as an apartment building form, and that's really any multi-unit building with apartments that could be vertically arranged. Parking could be below or behind the building, um, and really it could be for sale or for rental. It doesn't really differentiate. We can't define that here in the city. But really, for the purposes of our discussion, we have a detached house building form and then it goes all the way to the apartment building form, but not much in the middle right now. So when we talk about apartment building form, this can be a rather broad definition and so that is what was included in the January amendment and also what's being discussed here tonight, so, um. Back forward to February, staff actually received some interest in development of an independent living facility on a parcel that was located within the neighborhood center commercial zoning designation. Based off of the text amendment in January, staff notified that applicant that the proposed location for that independent living facility was no longer supported by the ordinances. And then in April, uh, twenty twenty-three, public comment was provided at the city council meeting asking council to take a second look at our land development code related specifically to multifamily housing. And after comments were received, later that same evening, council provided staff direction to research options for a possible text amendment that would allow for senior housing and/or assisted living projects to be considered again by this council. And so, in May of twenty twenty-three, staff then asked planning board for input as to a direction to proceed with the proposed text amendment, outlining two different options that we could consider. One being a traffic-based approach, looking at trip generation from those uses, and then the other being a location-based approach, potentially focusing our efforts on the center-city core area. Um, planning board ultimately, after discussing this item, recommended that City Council consider rescension of the text amendment twenty twenty-two point zero five in order to, for, in order to allow some additional time for all options to be further vetted. Later in June, the planning board chair presented their recommendation to City Council at their June City Council meeting. Uh, but no action was taken at that meeting related to this recommendation. And so in July, um, staff came to a City Council workshop and presented both options that were originally presented to planning board, again, that was the traffic-based approach, as well as a location-based approach. And after discussing those options, City Council decided that a text amendment should take a traffic-focused approach. And so that is what staff has, um, been working on to date and is the basis for this item coming before you tonight. So as part of that traffic-based approach, we broke that down into a few steps for consideration. And all of these were done in conjunction with consultation from Kimberly Horn, who's our transportation engineering consultant. They are here tonight if you do have any questions that arise after this presentation, um, for any details related to the data or their, um, analysis as a part of this text amendment effort. So step one was to compare trip generation of various multifamily uses that are typically found within apartment building forms. We typically think of standard multifamily apartments as one, but there are more. And so we wanted to compare and also utilize the standard multifamily as our baseline for that comparison. We utilized the ITE land use category two twenty, which is the document or is a category that's generated in the ITE trip generation manual, always used by Kimberly Horn as part of our traffic analysis studies. We used this as a baseline because this outlined a multifamily housing option that was low-rise, limited to two to three floors. And this is consistent with what our code allows for apartment building forms by right. Um, anything over three floors would require approval through conditional zoning. And so as a baseline, we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with that for all of the data we're looking at here this evening. So you see that baseline in red on your screen for multifamily trip generation chart. Again, this is a chart where we look at comparative trip generation for those various multifamily uses. And so again, you see that red for the baseline. Um, and example one that we'll reference throughout the presentation is the next highest daily trip generator of affordable housing that is limited, uh, by income. And again, you see that's about two-thirds of what the standard daily trip generation is for multifamily housing. It does have slightly less AM and PM, but you don't see a whole lot of difference there. And then the next example that's going to continue throughout tonight's presentation skips down to land use category two fifty-two for senior adult housing, multifamily. And if you look at that compared to the baseline, you're seeing daily trips generated, um, of about half. As a caveat, all of this data is based off of just an example of any project that's a hundred units. So this data would have to be run for each case-by-case scenario, because not all apartments are a hundred units exactly. But we wanted to be able to provide an across-the-board comparison of picked a hundred units just to provide a baseline example for comparison. So if you look at a hundred units of senior multifamily housing compared to a hundred units of standard multifamily housing low-rise, you're seeing trip generation daily of less than half, um, as well as less than half of the AM and PM peak hour trips generated by that use. Step two would be that we compared the trip generation of various commercial uses to the multifamily uses that we discussed on the last slide. Um, and in order to do that, what we first did was identify commercial uses that were already allowable in zones where we might possibly be interested in reconsidering the apartment building form. So we went through that list and pulled out some of the most common, um, uses in that chart and then asked Kimberly Horn to provide us some trip generation data to be able to use as a starting point for our discussion. We also used some sizing assumptions to allow us to have comparisons of buildings of the same size. And so for this purpose and exercise, the data represented is comparative of one dwelling unit equaling on average eight hundred square feet. That was just a baseline comparison, not project-specific by any means. Um, it doesn't talk about the number of bedrooms. It's typically done as a, um, a factor in trip generation for residential. But for comparison purposes, what we wanted to do was be able to say, okay, if a building was around twenty thousand square feet and it contained multifamily, how many trips would that generate versus if it was twenty thousand square feet of commercial uses within the same building footprint or size? And so doing that allowed us to compare twenty-five units of residential housing of multifamily nature to about twenty thousand square foot of commercial. And so here is that commercial trip generation chart, again, utilizing comparable square footage volumes. And you can see that affordable housing, um, comes in for twenty-five units at daily trips of about two hundred and thirty-three. Just under that is that standard baseline multifamily housing, uh, limited to three floors, twenty-five units of that daily trip duration of two hundred and thirty-six. Um, and then, what is important here is that the next one down is the lowest trip generator of all the commercial uses that we analyzed, and that's for general office building use. So if we look at twenty thousand square foot of general office building use, um, and we compare that, we can see that the daily trip generation is higher. We also see that the AM and PM peak hour trips are higher. And there are trips that are generated through commercial development, the remaining lists on the screen, that are substantially higher than that general office building. The next one up, for example, is a medical and dental office, and that trip, trip generation jumps up and almost is triple what we see with the multifamily housing, uh, based off a similarly sized building. And it goes up from there, so that chart is listed in the order. So the one on the bottom that generates the highest trip volumes, uh, that we studied was supermarket. And that one is for a twenty thousand square foot supermarket, over twenty-two hundred trips daily, is what we're seeing there. So the next step in staff's analysis was to evaluate, if we're going to revisit this topic, which zones might we be interested in revisiting? And so the first thing we did was look at which zones were originally included in text amendment twenty twenty-two point oh five. Um, and that revision, or that amendment included revisions in six different zones, three of which were primarily residential in nature and three of which were more commercial in nature. The yellow are the more residential, the blue on your screen are the more commercial in use. Uh, and staff did a quick generation too in terms of how many affected parcels, um, uh, were available that already zoned in each of those, that were impacted by the text amendment in January, but also that may be impacted by the text amendment that we're considering here tonight. Uh, we also looked at a zoning map to determine where are these parcels located? We're going to look at revisiting them, where does it make the most sense? And so the map on the left is a map showing all six zones. Of note, you can see that, uh, the majority of that land in either one of those graphics is not located on the peninsula. It's located more in the centralized areas of our community. Um, so again, map on the left is all six of those zones. The map on the right is just the commercial zones, just those three commercial zones. Um, and you can see that area really honing in more on the core in the commercial, but both of them are more in the centralized portions of our municipality. We also wanted to make sure that we were looking at our long-range plan when it comes to how we see the city growing and developing over time. And so for that, we referenced our comprehensive land use plan. Um, in our comprehensive land use plan, there are specific areas, um, in land uses that are targeted for higher density residential, and that's residential that's, um, above six dwelling units to the acre. It doesn't say that that's all that can go there. It just says that if we're looking at areas that might be able to support higher density residential, these are areas we should look at and consider, um, for those types of uses. Specifically, our comprehensive land use plan says that we might find these uses to be able to be supported in village centers, small area plans, downtown neighborhoods, mixed-use areas, neighborhood conservation, with a caveat that says those would only be if that specific location was adjacent to a major thoroughfare. And then the other one would be traditional neighborhood development. I would say that while it doesn't have that caveat there, that that would also be planning staff's recommendation that, um, anytime we have it in more traditional neighborhoods and/or, um, more residential areas, it would make sense most next to thoroughfares. Um, but being said, you can see the map on the left, uh, where those areas are envisioned within our municipality and we go back to those being in the more centralized areas of our community. All of this information was presented to planning board at their August planning board meeting. And after discussing the information provided, planning board requested, um, some additional information be brought back to them before they rendered a recommendation. Specifically, they requested to see a trip generation comparison of, um, existing approved multifamily projects in Belmont. And what would happen if ten percent of those units were designated as affordable housing or senior housing?
I can just, I'm sorry, I think you're about to say that. Where did the ten percent come from? There was a initial proposal or staff proposal submitted to the planning board, correct?
That is correct. Yep, that's exactly where I was going, Jeff. Thank you for that. So, um, the reason they're asking for this is when staff had originally provided, uh, planning board a draft text for their consideration. One of the bullet points of that consideration was that ten percent of the units may be designated specifically to one of those lower trip generating multifamily uses, um, as a requirement for being able to proceed through the conditional zoning process. And so planning board provided feedback that said, well, if we want to add that as a requirement, we want to understand that better and see, does that really produce the type of, um, reduction in trip generation that it implies that it may, right? And so they wanted to analyze that a bit further to be able to provide you all that feedback before your consideration and definitely before their own recommendation. And so that information was analyzed and we'll get there in a minute. Um, they also asked staff to look at the trip generation comparison of potential uses on a specific site. And so in coordination and collaboration with the Park Street United Methodist Church team, they allowed us graciously to utilize their site as a point of discussion and because they had already provided a sketch plan, um, in an application, uh, format for us back in February, when this item was first brought up for reconsideration. And so we did utilize them and their site for further discussion, to bring that back. Specifically, planning board asked us to look at, um, trip generation of a hundred units of multifamily on that site were proposed there of various sites versus if that site was developed for more of a commercial type of use with a similar building footprint. Uh, so we did both of those things. Um, step four is the first item that we were asked to do, which is to analyze the trip generation for the ten percent of the units if they were reserved as, um, the specified multifamily uses. And to do that, we looked at four different existing apartment communities here within the city of Belmont limits. There's one on your screen, but all four were included in your package of information for your consideration here this evening. Uh, but the trend across the board in all four cases was the same. Again, you see at the top that baseline and then green, you see, um, what would happen if ten percent of the units for, let's say as an example, the Abercote apartment, which had a hundred and two total dwelling units of apartments? Um, what if ten percent was reserved for affordable housing? What you actually see here happening is that the trip generation for just ten percent of affordable housing in this scenario increases. So we looked at that and we said, okay, well, what happens if we did ten percent of those units reserved for senior housing? And in that scenario, we see trip generations do start to reduce, although negligible, uh, pretty, pretty low impact there. And so, uh, I believe in your packet, I didn't present a slide, some of planning board's questions related to, well, why is that happening and what would it take to tip the scales, right? And so, um, I'm providing this for you and then Brady is again here to answer a little bit more detailed analysis if you have questions on this, but the reason why we're seeing some of that variability is because when we look at the graphs of formulas utilized to calculate trip generation, they're not linear in nature. They're a lot more than that. And so that means that sometimes there might be peaks, then there might be valleys, and then it might peak up again. And so there's a lot of different factors that go into that. And so what might be the tipping point for one specific multifamily use? There may be a different tipping point for the next multifamily use. And all of that is going to be on a case-by-case basis. And so, because it's on a case-by-case basis, it's really hard to pinpoint an exact percentage that yields a reduction in traffic generation. That being said, we did our best and, um, to analyze that and base off the feedback from Kimberly Horn before we get into this next item, one of the planning board's questions was, well, if ten percent's not enough on affordable housing, for instance, right, what, what is? Um, and so Kimberly Horn ran that data as well. For, it really depends on where we want to see those trips reduced. If we just wanted to reduce daily trips, affordable housing would need about twenty percent of an apartment building form to be utilized for affordable housing. If we wanted a reduction in both the daily and the PM trips, we would need about sixty-five of those units or sixty-five percent of those units to be reserved for affordable housing. And if we wanted reduction in the daily AM and PM peak hour volumes, we would need a hundred percent of those units to be reserved for affordable housing. Um, so, that being said, the question from planning board then came up, well, based off of the draft, how would you know which one would be reduced in trip gen? Would it be in all three categories? Or would, would council want to see a trip gen reduction in at least one of the three categories? Or, or how would that work? And so, uh, that was a point of their discussion and, and included in the staff report as part of their deliberations. The last item that they asked us to look at was to evaluate a specific project site and its possible uses in order to be able to look at comparative trip gen volumes from those uses. Oh, I'm going the wrong way, I'm sorry. So, again, we utilize the Park Street United Methodist Church campus as our example. That property is currently zoned general residential. Allowable uses within general residential include single-family, detached townhomes, daycare centers, bed and breakfasts, event facilities, temporary amusement and scenic uses. The application included a site plan that showed a building footprint of approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet. And it proposes a four-story building that would utilize the conditional zoning process that results in about a hundred and ten thousand square foot in total building size. The desired use of the applicant was a hundred units of senior multifamily. That's that pink senior multifamily, um, housing example that we were talking about here this evening, um, land use category two fifty-two. Looking at our comprehensive land use plan, this is actually located in a. Looking at our comprehensive land use plan, this is actually located in a small area plan within their city's center city area. And this is located specifically within the center city core. The envisioned land uses for this parcel in our long-range plans include retail, residential, office, commercial, civic, institutional, parks, and open space. So a wide variety of envisioned land uses could be here at this specific site location as an example. Looking at the nearby zoning designations to this subject site, while it is currently zoned general residential, we see it's directly adjacent to Neighborhood Center Commercial and also not very far from Downtown District. There's also some surrounding infield residential as well as general residential here. What that means to staff is that it's likely that the most likely resounding possibilities for this site, if they were interested in doing so, would be a request consideration as Neighborhood Center Commercial or Downtown District, based off its proximity to an intersection here in town. So looking at that, we wanted to then analyze what would that mean in each of the development scenarios, depending on the interest of that specific site. And here's what we found. So as you may recall, a daycare is a use that's allowable by right within general residential zones. Typical size is about 10,000 square foot for a daycare. If we looked at that size of a building, which is much smaller than the building footprint that's proposed right now for the property, but even if we looked at the average size of a daycare, which is a pretty common supplemental or supportive use for a church property, what we can see is that we're looking at about 476 daily trips per day if a facility was proposed with that size and AM and PM peak hours of over 100 in AM and over 100 in the PM. When we compare that to the potential for requesting that site to be redeveloped as commercial, again, remember that general office was the lowest trip generator of all the commercial uses that we analyzed, we can see that if they developed that as a two-story building, which they can go up to three, but even if they developed that as a two-story building, we're looking at about 690 daily trips and really similar trip generation volumes as the daycare example here. The building size is bigger, but the trip generation AM/PM is pretty comparable. Looking at an alternative here, we actually compared it to multifamily uses. We see here example two of the senior adult multifamily housing, which is what's currently proposed for the site, being 110 square feet, four floors. We're actually seeing for 100 units, which is what the applicant's proposing here, daily trip generation, even lower than the daycare that's allowed by right. It's about two-thirds lower. And then you can see those AM and PM peak hours are about one-fifth of what the daycare AM and PM peaks would result in. And of course, any site may request development for any variety of number of uses, but just wanted to provide some comparative points for our discussion here this evening. This is certainly not a comprehensive list, but we hope that this provides a good starting point for the discussion and dialogue. Of note, even if we looked at how standard multifamily housing, low rise, remember that baseline, even if we looked at how that compares to the daycare that's allowed by right, we can see that the trip generation for that use would also be lower. And but more specifically, the AM and PM peak hours would be about half of the daycare use. Ultimately, after reviewing all of this additional data, as well as the data originally provided by planning board in August, planning board had made a recommendation and is presenting a recommendation to you tonight to amend staff's originally proposed text amendment as follows, and that is in chapter six, to add in consideration for multifamily housing within traditional neighborhood development and infield residential development as well as Neighborhood Center Residential. They are proposing and recommending that you strike out staff's bullet points or II, which include the consideration of requiring multifamily to produce a lower trip generation than standard multifamily, right? That it has some other mix of uses that would make it still a lower trip generator than the standard baseline multifamily housing use. They are also recommending the removal of the 10% requirement for those additional type of multifamily uses. That would be the senior supportive assisted living, congregant facility, as well as student housing that were listed within the original recommendation. Accompanying the revisions that are proposed by the planning board in chapter six are the following changes in chapter five, and that means they are proposing that the text be amended to add the apartment building form back into the permitted building types within now six zones, the same as the former text amendment. And then also to clarify the performance standards for the residentially permitted uses in order to guide folks to the performance standards that were newly introduced into chapter six to clarify that for everyone and make the ordinance a bit more legible and easy to read. So they are proposing that that be amended in all six of those zones as well. You see that red text that's crossed out there? That's because prior to this amendment, the provision simply read within chapter five that multifamily uses may be able to be considered through the conditional zoning process. That was pre-January. So instead of doing that, we try to make it a little bit more clear, what staff originally drafted it out, actually put those specific requirements within chapter six to outline those additional requirements for specific uses that that chapter was originally intended to hold on to. And so in summary, planning board is recommending that we continue to allow the apartment building form in highway, commercial, and institutional campus district, that we reintroduce the apartment building form in other areas of our city as well. And we also require conditional zoning for apartment building forms that are requesting consideration as well as the multifamily uses contained within them anytime they're proposed within the following zones: infield residential, traditional neighborhood development, Neighborhood Center Residential, Neighborhood Center Commercial, Downtown District, and Business Campus Development. Staff's asking that you accept planning board's recommendation, receive the staff report, any public comment here tonight, and that ultimately you discuss and make a motion to either approve it, present it, approve it, modify it, or disapprove the proposed text amendment. Along with that, we are asking council to make two findings. One, that the text amendment is reasonable and in the public's interest, as well as that the text amendment is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan, specifically in the area of goal number one land use and goal number six infrastructure. And with that, I stand by for any questions you may have.
Tiffany, could you tell us how much time the planning zoning board spent working through this, though not substantial?
Sure. I would say on average that planning and zoning board talked about this at two different meetings. And if my recollection serves me right, about two hours at each meeting, this was the only item on their agenda. And so a total of four hours of discussion. And I do not know how many hours of preparation for that discussion each member put in, but I can tell you during the meetings how long both of those were.
The other thing, if we're looking at all these pieces of the puzzle, basically we're talking about where fact or where we were in January when we kept calls, is that correct?
That is planning board's recommendation, and I believe that my understanding of the reasoning for that was in part because what we learned throughout all of this analyzation of all the data is there are so many case-by-case specific details to traffic generation and traffic analysis. And so by allowing proposals to come through the process and be presented to both planning board and council through the conditional zoning, rather than coming and potentially not being able to move forward at the staff level, they felt like we'd be able to hear all of those case-by-case details for each project individually.
So in your professional opinion, do we have enough protections with the conditional so that we would not be jeopardizing anything with regard to apartments?
In my professional opinion, you do. And the reason why is because council has full discretion with every single conditional zoning application. If you all do not find it to be in the city's best interest to make a recommendation that that does not move forward, the ultimate decision is at the power of city council's hands. And so that would first be vetted and analyzed by staff as well as planning board before it was ever presented to you, but you all would have the final say.
Okay, thank you. If you would, and some of us do know some of the planning board people, but if you would make sure and tell them how much we appreciate that, because we wanted to have all the statistics and the analyzation to make sure that we were making the right decisions. So would you please relate that to them?
I will. And I just, I also would feel obligated to inform you all that the Park Street United Methodist team has been very supportive of this entire effort, and I just wanted to offer thanks as a staff member to their team for partnering to allow us to be able to hire Kimberly Horn to do a lot of the data analysis presented. They have been interlored of that. That was not something that was budgeted within staff's departmental budget, but because of their partnership, we were able to make sure that all of that data was presented for your consideration and analysis. So I just want to go on record by saying that they have been a great support to this text amendment, even though it's a separate consideration from their project. Thank you.
How much time would you say the staff put into crafting the motion? We're watching it pretty much for two weeks.
I don't know that I tracked that. I went through the background and tell you about all of the data that we analyzed, and so I have to go back and look at how much time we've individually spent. I wouldn't want to misstate that on the record, but considerable amount of time and coordination with our consultant as well to present the information prepared.
Do you feel that the amendment which you presented met council's directive of what division the council set forth?
I do. My understanding of council's direction was for staff to prepare a traffic-focused approach, and I believe that the data provided to both planning board and city council provides a wealth of data from a trip generation standpoint that would allow us to make traffic-focused decisions.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have some. Just you've given us a lot of information, and thank you for that, just to make sure that we understand how all this came together. Let me know if I'm understanding this. So we were concerned with traffic impacts of multifamily uses, so we decided to compare the expected trips generated by multifamily uses with the commercial uses that were currently being allowed in the zoning designations and questions, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we took a set number of multifamily units, I think it was 100, multiplied by the average square footage of a unit of that type, and then used that as the square footage of a comparable commercial building that was otherwise permitted in that zoning district, correct?
Yes.
And then you then compared the trips generated by the multifamily units with the trips generated by the commercial building of the same square footage that was already allowed in that district, is that correct?
Yes. I would like to caveat as I'm processing everything that you're saying to say that in the residential zones, I'm not saying that all of the listed commercial uses aren't permitted within those residentially listed zones, but where there is commercial use allowable, that is what staff analyzed and brought forth. So it's not that they would all be allowable within each and every of the six zones, but in some form or fashion would be at least allowed in one of the ones listed.
Right. Okay, thank you for that caveat. And then if the expected trip generation from a multifamily use would be equal to or less than the expected trip generation from the commercial use that was already allowed, you said, well, that would be a situation where we might amend the text to allow such a use in those districts, is that correct?
That may be a better way to word that, Jim, but actually how staff had originally proposed it would be a trip generation comparison from the baseline standard of trips generated for a typical multifamily apartment versus the other types of multifamily uses that can be contained within an apartment building form. It was then realized that it may make sense to compare it also to similarly sized commercial uses, but that's not how staff's original text was presented, so just to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. And do I understand correctly that of the six designations that were considered, the reason why staff originally chose three, which is Neighborhood Center Commercial, Downtown District, and Business Campus Development versus the others, was that those were more commercial in nature and the other three were more residential in nature?
That's correct. And we also understood that there was some concern, right? So planning principals would say that if we're not sure, an incremental approach seems to be the best way to go. That being said, we made that recommendation and then also entered in new data into the conversation to help inform decisions. And so planning board vetted things even beyond staff's original amount of data that we had at the time of preparation of that draft text.
And of course, the planning board's recommendation was to reintroduce the apartment building form in all six of those districts.
Yes, that is their final recommendation, and that would allow for all of the projects to be able to come before you.
What was the purpose of requiring that a minimum 10% of the units be senior, student, or supportive housing? I'm going to refer to the original proposals as staff proposal.
Sure.
Versus what planning board recommended to us as the planning board recommendation, is that fine?
That's fine.
Okay. What was the purpose of requiring that a minimum of 10% of the units must be senior, student, or supportive housing in the staff proposal?
Sure. So the basis of that idea was that we wanted to make sure that there was a comfort level if a project were coming before you and it had, let's say, very minimal trip reduction over another project, then maybe they got that very minimal trip reduction by just adding one unit of a special type that allowed them to just tip the scales of getting under that threshold, right? And so the thought here was to introduce some percentage. We utilized 10 as a starting point to say, well, if it would make everyone more comfortable, then we could set a minimum limit to say, okay, well, a minimum of a certain percentage of uses, multifamily uses, that result in lower trip generation on average, be included in any proposal that comes before you all for consideration.
Would a good way of saying it be that if, and you look at the charts and the affordable and the supportive student housing, they all result in lower trip generations than standard multifamily use, if we require a set percentage of such uses, and that would automatically make it lower than a standard multifamily use, at least theoretically?
That was the hypothesis, and that was then tested with the data and showed to not always be the case.
And we'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay.
But from a bigger picture, how would we ensure, if we said 10% of the units have to be senior housing, student housing, affordable housing, how would we ensure that once built, that those units would remain of that designation?
That's a great question and one that planning board had as well. And I believe that part of their discussion was that by removing that item, it went away, the complexity of dealing with that possibility went away, that each project could still present and propose to you all and planning board a project that includes affordable housing. This wouldn't prohibit them from doing that, and then each applicant would then explain how that would be able to be sustained in perpetuity.
Now, as you alluded to just a moment ago, requiring 10% of multifamily units to be reserved for affordable housing does not in fact lower trip generation compared to standard multifamily apartments, does it?
That's correct.
And in fact, to lower daily AM and PM peak trips, all three of those, 100% of the units would need to be affordable, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if we require 10% of multifamily units to be reserved for senior housing, that does lower trip generation, but you characterize it as negligible, is that correct? Or would you characterize that as negligible?
I would characterize it that way.
All right, very good. And am I also correct that a standard multifamily project produces about half the peak hour trip generation as a comfortably sized commercial office building?
That's what the data showed, yes.
And commercial office buildings are currently permitted in these zoning districts, is that correct?
In the commercial zoning districts, yes.
Okay. And a 1,000 square foot daycare center produces double the peak hour trip generation as a 100-unit multifamily project and four times the peak hour trip generation of a senior multifamily housing project, is that correct?
A 10,000 square foot daycare, but yes.
Yes. What did I say?
One.
Oh, I meant to say ten.
That's okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, we are. And daycare centers are currently allowed in all zones, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Now then, the staff report that you submitted to us states that this amendment, as originally presented, was written to provide planning board and city council the opportunity to consider apartment building projects on a case-by-case basis through the conditional zoning process in additional areas of our community, including their aesthetics, scale, and impact. Prior to the January 2023 amendments, multifamily was only allowed pursuant to conditional zoning in the zoning districts and questions, is that correct?
That's correct.
So all the concerns prompting the current text amendment could have been addressed through the land development code as it existed prior to January 2023, correct?
That's staff's understanding. However, we understand that there were concerns that were brought to our attention in January when the original text was done, and so we listened to city council's concerns on that. And again, we now have more information provided to inform the conversation. And again, we now have more information provided to inform the conversation.
And that information does not support the 10% requirement as reducing traffic, does it?
The 10% requirement doesn't appear to help us in this case.
But does it satisfy a goal that we have for affordable housing to introduce that?
I don't know that it would. I don't know that this is the appropriate place in my recommendation for us to address that. And the reason being is that while it may reduce, it may require that any project be fully affordable housing, and then in terms of location, we have to look at where that might make sense and where we might want that to be located. So I think when we merge the two conversations, it would be my recommendation that we actually look at these items separately. Affordable housing may make sense as a need in our community that could result in lower trip generation, but there may be broader considerations we need to discuss related to public transit, related to supportive services, related to where families want to shop and be. And so all of that information and the complexity of affordable housing and/or attainable housing hasn't been well vetted enough to make that be an imperative part of this decision-making. That was however, the basis of us kind of starting there with saying, hey, maybe we can meet both goals with one text amendment. I just don't know that that's where the data says now that we've analyzed that opportunity.
But what it would be, you may not have someone who wants to build 100 units affordable housing. What this does, 10% would sprinkle that throughout the city where it is allowed.
It could. It could. It could also, one of the things that we were looking at is when projects come before you all, it's not only the project itself, right? Sometimes we have negotiations that come with that. So for instance, additional right-of-way that may be needed to make transportation improvements at specific locations. If a project wanted to do multifamily and the numbers didn't make sense for them to incorporate 10% of affordable housing, by setting that standard, maybe they'd be willing to do five if we had a dialogue and discussion about priorities and goals. But if we codified 10% and the numbers didn't work out for 10%, we may lose out on opportunities to partner with the development community for needed right-of-way, for mitigation improvements, and for a variety of other traffic improvements to our community that may be able to be done in collaboration with that developer.
That's actually a good point that I was going to ask you about as well. This is a smaller part of I think of a broader conversation, but it's important, I think. I'm on page 105 of the 23 text amendment where you provided a craft that was really helpful. By the way, all of this data has been really helpful. Thank you. But I'm in the, I think it may be the last section, the additional information. Can you just kind of speak to this relationship between developer-funded improvements as it relates to kind of the density of the different housing forms?
Sure. And so I don't have a slide for this chart, and I apologize. And that's because this data was received and provided following planning board's recommendation and partnership with Kim Lee-Corn. So I wanted to make sure it was included in your staff report, but I don't have a slide for you. But basically, we have a TIA threshold for when uses would trigger the need for traffic analysis. And that traffic analysis can and usually does result in identified mitigation for projects. So one of the things we did in conjunction with Kim Lee-Corn was look at how many number of units based off different types of residential uses would it take to hit the standard TIA threshold? So looking at that, single-family detached housing would require 99 units in order to hit that threshold for 100 peak hour trips or 1,000 daily. Attached or townhomes would be 138 units would be what it would take to do that threshold. Multifamily standard, that's that baseline one that we've been talking about here tonight, 145 units. Affordable housing, 224. Senior adult housing, 338. So what we did is we said, okay, well, that data is interesting in and of itself, but what does that mean for us? And really understanding that when we are developing Belmont, the amount of vacant parcels we have for new development, not redevelopment, but new development are reducing the more our community continues to grow. And so looking at that, I wanted to compare that with the dwelling units to the acre that we typically see for each of the associated residential uses. And so what we did is compared, so for instance, in single-family, what we generally see for low-dwelling units acres about two, sometimes there are projects that are a little bit lower than that, up to about six dwelling use acre, that's the cap in general residential. So when we look at that, in order to trigger a TIA, even the study itself, unless it was on the peninsula because our threshold is lower there, but in the central areas of the city where we're really focused on this discussion tonight, we'd be looking at site area needed of at least 16 and a half acres to 49 and a half acres before a site, if it was developed as a single-family residential, would meet the TIA threshold.
So is it number of units and the minimum acreage?
So the minimum acreage was derived based off of utilizing the number of units and the low and high range for dwelling units to the acre. So kind of working backwards.
They have to satisfy both of those criteria in order to trigger the TIA.
The TIA itself is just based off that threshold, that first column there. So what we did was extrapolate information in order to try to make a better understanding of how many of these sites do we have left? If we want to partner with the development community on making mitigation improvements, the sites have to be available and we have to allow for the uses that would allow for those thresholds to be met. Or not partner with them to make the improvements. But normally, what we see is if they're willing to partner when the TIA reveals that mitigation improvements are necessary. And so to do that, there has to be a TIA. And so just working backwards to get us there. So again, if we look at single-family detached, we need a much larger site area as a general rule, about 16 and a half acres at minimum. That's not a hard vast, that's just a general ballpark, right? If we're looking at that. Whereas if we looked at multifamily housing, even just the standard multifamily housing, we could see that sites as low as four acres may generate a traffic study, and that may generate traffic mitigation needs. So not to say that multifamily is the right solution in every location, I don't think that that's what this conversation is about. It's just my hope with that data is that it helps to make a better understanding about why it might be helpful to reconsider additional locations within the centralized area of our city where we do need improvements for mitigation. And developers may be able to partner together with us to help to fit some of those identified areas within our community.
Just one more thing. You had talked about Park Street United Methodist project, and the staff report indicates that staff cannot support the proposed assisted living facility under the land development code as adopted. I was just wondering what the status of that project is at this time.
It's filed and on hold.
Thank you.
Yes.
And if we approved this as presented, would that be acceptable, would that be acceptable at that time?
That's correct. So the independent living facility at that site is just one example of a project that would be allowed to be for independent living is something that would qualify based on the description as fitting within the apartment building form. So it would be able to be reconsidered and analyzed by staff for a plan review. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? There is no public comment or none, anyway, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the planning board's recommendation.
Well, we got to come out in public here.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to come out in public here.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Uh-uh. Okay, so the next, you can go ahead and make your motion.
Now I'll make a motion to accept the planning board and staff and recommendation and approval as presented.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All those in favor? Count two. Pose. Three. Motion fails.
So Parks, where do we go from here?
I'll look. I need somebody to make a separate motion depending on what you think might be the will of the council.
I think it would be helpful to provide some direction to staff if we are interested in, or staff or movements or something. So we'll just leave it hanging. Does that make sense?
I think we just did. I don't know the next option because what you're looking at now is that you set up the situation with Parks feet and that, and this is going to be very questionable as far as how we consider this, if we're not allowing that people. That's a great concern to me.
Parks, can we put on the floor staff's original recommendation? Do you have a motion? A motion, yes. All right, I will make that motion to consider staff's original recommendation.
I'll second that.
Consider it or to adopt.
So there's a motion and a second on the, do you have the?
Can staff ask a clarification question to the motion? Is that a subject? If with that, one of the things in the analysis that was brought out is with the trip generation results, right? Are you all, do you want to clarify staff's recommendation to note that if any of the trips generated daily, AM, PM, or lower, two and three, all, staff would ask for clarification there? I think the data that was provided back at the time that planning board requested it made staff think that that was a valid thing that would need to be clarified before we adopted any ordinance language.
Do you have any ordinance language available? I think I saw a red line or a red line.
He's no way.
Yeah, that's fine, just so we know what we're talking about. So you're suggesting adding some language, I guess, to 2A to clarify the, or no, I guess two, to clarify where the reduction would need to be? Is that?
It would be to two at minimum. So staff had the original there. In your report, you can see planning board actually considered multiple options as well instead of their full recommendation, whether or not it should just be the free zones, whether or not it should be just striking out the option A for the 10% required, and then also whether or not it should include the first bullet point there of requiring reduced trips generated. So there's a variety of different options that could be considered, and we're leaning on council for your direction in terms of exactly how you'd like to see that modified and or what parts of that puzzle you'd like to see included. But I do think in terms of what would be clarified in terms of if you're asking for us to vet a project to make sure that there's reduced trip generation, we understand in what area, just daily trips or AM or PM or all three, to understand how that can be forwarded.
Ideally, all three, but I don't know.
There seem to be a lot of variance in some of those categories between the peak hours versus the overall daily trips. So to me, the daily is the bigger target, if you will.
That would make sense to staff. I mean, I think that there's a lot of caveats when we start talking about a need for trip reduction and all three. And again, for conditional zoning, the more projects that come before you, then you all have the discretion to be able to analyze all of that. When, if a project doesn't meet any specific threshold that's stated in our ordinance, the project pretty much dies at the table. It doesn't come before you. If it's at a site where we may want to negotiate improvements, the project doesn't come before you at all for discussion. So I would say whatever you all are comfortable with, but I would encourage you to provide as much direction to staff as you possibly can to make sure that we're bringing forward to you all the projects that you'd like to see or consider.
So I understand you said that daily trips would give you the most latitude?
Yes.
All right, well, we're going to make the amendment to the motion, daily trips.
So I'm hearing a motion to amend the motion to add a requirement that the daily trips be reduced.
Correct.
Is that?
I have to, and just to clarify, are you guys making the motion to also include I O A that a minimum of 10% should be included, or are you just making a motion? So, sorry. I don't know if I'm really clear. There's two caveats here, this and this. This is the 10%, that's the lower. Right now, as it was drafted originally, a person would have to have both. But just to make sure that we're clear on which part is included in the current motion on the floor. Do you guys have any understanding? Does that make sense?
Yeah. How many percent? I think 10%.
So I think both is what it is. So both, and then the focus being on the reduction to the daily travel count to give you, as you said, and can you clarify that again one more time? How does that give you the latitude to be able to? Because I just want to make sure I understand it. Been a little bit relatively quiet on this because I think Jim brought up some good points, and I do appreciate that rhetoric, but I.
It's more than rhetoric.
It's a cross statement.
Yeah. We got to see Jeff and what his work is tonight. But could you go over what you're talking about in regards to the daily trip?
Sure. So I think that the best example of this would be the one we did for affordable housing, right? So Brady analyzed that for an affordable housing project to come before you, if it had 20% of the units as affordable housing, it would result in a lower trip generation than standard multifamily. If it required itself to prove that it had lower daily and PM, 65% of the units would have to be designated, and then the other would be all three would be a total of 100% of the project would have to be that type of use.
Got you. No, I appreciate that.
All right, so the motion is needed to include the daily trip generation. Do you need direction?
Adjust the daily to have a lower daily.
Daily trip generation and 10% of affordable housing.
Yes. It would look even better as even more, you all could also consider to say a trip reduction in any one of the three, if you wanted to broaden it even further or just.
I mean, daily is the target for me.
Okay.
Well, now, I'm just, you know, just to the interest of, you know, there were a number of different types listed there, and I believe the motion was only with respect to senior housing and affordable housing. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all, you know, that we understand what we're voting on and that whether we are including some of those other ones in that or not, just to alleviate any confusion on, you know, and I think it's a moot point as far as I'm concerned, but I'm just trying to make sure that we understand what we're voting on.
I mean, the thing for right now, I mean, we can always revisit this. I'm fine with senior and affordable housing.
Okay.
Okay. So my understanding, what's currently on the floor, is the red, you're about to say something. Can we have some discussion?
No, I just, I want to. No, I'm just, I'm listening.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page as far as what, where we're at. So we've got the red. Are we striking the everything except under 2A? Are we striking everything except affordable housing and senior adult housing, multifamily? Is that being turned?
Now, what staff's understanding, staff's understanding was you were comfortable with any mix of any of those as they all would reduce trip generation.
Okay.
But clarity is appreciated.
Okay. Because we were just talking about the daily trips and the reductions only applying to senior housing and affordable housing.
It would apply to all. It would apply to all of that, right? So that clarification was to bullet point II, which is the requirement that any project in order to come before you for conditional zoning would need to be able to validate that their project produces less trips than a standard multifamily project standalone. I would say to Jim's point earlier about clarifying staff's intention, staff's original text compared the multifamily baseline to other multifamily uses that could be considered. Jim mentioned, and for what it's worth, as a part of the planning board discussion, we actually looked at comparative baseline of the lowest trip generation of commercial use below. So just to make sure what the baseline is as well, would be helpful if you guys are comfortable utilizing multifamily to multifamily, or if you would prefer to look at any multifamily that produces less trips than. multifamily to multifamily or if you would prefer to look at any multifamily that produces less trips than an allowable commercial use within the same zones.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I do have a few comments that I do want to add to this. Um, I do think it would be prudent, I know we've had one in the past, but to have a workshop with the planning and zoning um board to try to collectively work on this. I know this has been done in the past, but we are also working on a comprehensive land use plan. And I have said in the past that this is something that should coincide with that, with getting the public's input and involvement in these types of decisions. Because a lot has changed since the last comprehensive land use plan was done. How many years ago, Jim, did you write it right off the top of your head?
Twenty eighteen, I think.
Twenty eighteen. A lot has changed. A lot of developments have come to this um to this town afterwards or this city. So again, I wanted to also make a note of, you know, we keep going from one side to the other of the single family use of the single family um houses to all the way to the apartment complexes. But yet we continue to miss literally the missing middle.
Sure.
And that was part of the discussion of trying to figure out alternatives to either one of the extremes, to the far left or to the far right. And that has also not been decided tonight. So again, I just want to give reason of why I'm dissenting against the planning and zoning recommendations. Because as far as I'm concerned, my original concerns were not addressed or discussed. So I think it would be prudent to have a workshop with planning and zoning zoning board over this discussion. So I just wanted to put those comments.
There is a separate group, right, of working that's working on the housing choices?
There there is. And so from staff's understanding, there were two separate directives given by council. One was this um directive to look at possible ways to reintroduce the apartment building forms specifically. The other directive was to look at opportunities for the missing middle and or increasing housing choices within our community that might be of a slightly smaller scale. We know that there are some times that the apartment building form and the uses contained within um need that scale. For independent living, having that centralized ability to have all residents access common amenities within one building form um seems to be programmatically what makes the most sense. And so the conversations from our perspective, while related or separate, um that being said, they are related and both efforts are underway um to make sure that we can provide holistic solutions. This just happens to be the one being presented before you tonight. The other one is anticipated to come early next year in January.
They coincide and they should be directly correlated, is all I'm saying, is because one does equal to the other, in my opinion. Because this is talk, we're talking about housing for the city of Belmont and what should be developed, what could potentially not be developed and what should be restricted and what shouldn't be. I think it's one and the same conversation. It might be on two parallel paths. They need to come together for us to be able to understand this type of discussions in the future. Again, that's just my opinion.
I I want to say one thing before we vote. Um, I can't, I cannot support. Well, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to um work with the proposed project at Park United Methodist Church. I can't support uh the motion as presented. I agree with the uh planning board's recommendation with respect, and I know that that staff is trying to um carry out council's directive. But I think that what we're about to vote on is a convoluted mess that overly complicates land development code without achieving its stated purpose. We wasted months twisting ourselves into logical pretzels only to arrive at the same place we were at before the January text amendments. Everything that sought to be achieved by what we're about to vote on could have been achieved through conditional zoning as it existed prior to January twenty twenty three. If we remained faithful to that approach, the assisted living project would have already been approved. Uh, as a lawyer and in the interest of simple, efficient and predictable governments, uh we should go back to the prior conditional zoning machine. And so therefore, I cannot vote for what we're about to vote.
Okay, I will make one comment. I don't have to get the verbiage. My people want to streamline things and make it just very procedurally simple. Okay, we're making this much more cumbersome and we're difficult. If I'm a developer, you put all this there and I'm going, okay, forget this. If you tell me what you're interested in, then we're looking at conditional zoning and you want traffic mitigation, you know, this, these are negotiating tools. I think by setting these limits, I think they'll make that much more cumbersome. So I would not be in favor of it at all.
Any other discussion? If not, there is a motion and a second on the floor, so I will call for a vote on that. All those in favor? Three opposed, no, two, motion carries.
Just for clarification, do you understand the what was included and what was not included in the motion to make sure that we can make the appropriate land development code changes? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just the 10%, just to clarify, the 10% just applies to senior and affordable housing?
I I. Anything with all of it? No?
That's not what Richard said.
No, I think it's a senior affordable housing.
So you want to you want to eliminate the possibility of the remaining uses listed here?
If or or um off campus student apartments, accommodated care facilities, sorry, it's kind of hard to read this. Assisted living and continuing care retirement.
Would it be possible to bring up this text in the paperwork document and just add it and kind of have some requirements around what the language is and so some areas?
Um, there should be a copy of the clean language in your packet. There's not my apology that's supposed to be in terms of the language that was originally presented. Nope, sorry, no.
Was this the red line version?
It was, it was wrote down in the bullet points in terms of what staff originally recommended and then um pages that.
Are you checking it in your notes?
Yeah, um, okay. Okay, my notes. I can tell you. I don't have these. Can I have this clean version here?
Okay.
For bullet point two, and then it would just be the basis.
Okay. Okay, so my understanding was we added to number two the requirement that there be a reduction in daily trips. Utilizing any of the uses listed in the list in A. Is that consistent with?
That's that's how I have to say it. When, but I think the list is inclusive, right, one through six? Affordable housing, off campus student apartment, senior adult housing. I'm sorry, I thought you were good. Assisted assisted living and continuing care.
So the question I have is the 10%, is that different than the reduction in the daily trips?
So is the list? I've extracted a project would need to meet both bullets in order for it to move forward.
So you have to reduce daily trips and utilize 10% of the units in one of those categories?
At least 10%.
Yeah, I think that's consistent with. That was my understanding, yeah.
But is it just the two bullets? So it'd be both to reduce the daily trips for all of these? And the 10% for all of them?
That was my understanding, but I want to make sure that we're clear on the motion to make sure I'm adjusting the code appropriately.
Yeah, so it's, are we removing the this li-?
Sorry, I I brought this up because I not only need a motion, I also need the other page.
You mean the consistency button?
Yes.
And?
This list here applies to both, the reduction in daily trips and the 10%. So are we reducing this for the reduction 10% to just affordable housing and senior development? Because it has to be both. That's how you motioned it from what I understand. Is that correct?
It would seem. The more affordable housing you're introducing, the more you're already reducing those daily trips, right, from the data.
That's correct. And so the the way that my understanding was is that um the uses that were listed here were all of the uses that provide a lower daily trip generator than standard multifamily. Um, the question is, is 10% enough? And so it was drafted in a way that would allow the projects to need to demonstrate both. Both an overall trip reduction daily, as was clarified, as well as at least 10% of the units within any one of the listed uses. If there's a listed use that you would like to strike from that opportunity to come for you, you know, for conditional zoning, I just want to make sure we understood what was on the floor and what was approved.
Yeah, so my understanding from the motion, this is right, is the only two that would be included, we remove everybody else but affordable housing and uh senior adult housing. Senior housing, is that correct?
That was a motion.
Was that the intent? I only mention that to say that would exclude opportunities for any project that's assisted living to come before you or any um continuing care retirement.
My intent was all six.
Okay.
I mean, I'm in the old motion. I mean, I'm fine with that. That was doing something to work with.
Sure, and staff doesn't want to force you in the way. I just want to clarify.
No, I just.
I would like to make sure that we all understand.
I understand. The 10% for me was a decent starting point. I think ten, 20% might be too almost on end to commit. So I would like to save the 10%, but I mean, I'm open to amending that.
I would request that we amend, sorry, all, because I thought we were just taking the the section here with the amendment to the daily trips, but keeping one through six. So yes, I would.
Okay, so how about we do this?
Well, maybe we should ask Parks what we should do.
Well, you actually asked the motion.
Yes, that's why I'm asking. I think we should ask Park.
Do you want to change, is it, or you want to change the action that's contained?
You're asking me. I mean, I'm fine if that's what we want. I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, to vacate that motion.
That you can vote to rescind that motion and then operate the motion.
Okay, why don't we do that?
But I think Richard or who has to call it, because isn't there someone specifically who has to call it or does it matter?
It has to be from the group that proved it.
That's not us.
The group that proved it.
Okay. Motion to rescind, yeah, the previous motion.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motions.
Motion to approve the staff's text amendment, since we're calling it staff's text amendment, with the um addition to the emphasis on daily. I mean, is that, is that going to be sufficient on the daily traffic count?
Sure, staff staff understand your intent.
Okay, thank you. Um, and including uh two A, one through six.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three opposed.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, along with that motion, um, I'm asking for a motion on the findings.
So you want to make a motion on the.
I'm happy to make that motion if you can tell me where the verbiage is in here.
It just passed off my staff report. Bear with me one second.
Okay, oh.
There is a signed consistency statement from the planning board with the verbiage. The text itself has not been amended, however, the proposed draft for your consideration of signed consistency statement.
Oh, okay.
Um, what began the items included in your agenda that are for signed consistency statements?
So that's the one that makes.
Correct.
Can you give me a page?
Yeah, I'm I'm pulled out.
Page 160. Starting my way down, we're at. On 160, I think page 160, I'm pretty damn in the boat. Let's put it up right now.
All right, I think I found it. Uh, whereas Belmont City Council held a public hearing on October 2nd, 2023 and considered the found of the text amendment petition to be unreasonable and in the best interest of the public. Uh, physical lines, the city land use definition to be consistent with state law and also is consistent with the goals of the adopted comprehensive comprehensive land use plans and other plans as it provides balanced approach to land use that protects existing residents while fostering innovative site design. And is consistent with goal one, land use as it specifically facilitates amenities to support recovery. Is it, am I in the right area?
Yeah, I believe in the ordinance as opposed to the signed consistency statement.
Okay, no less.
But that should work as well in terms of reason. I just need any finding that is reasonable and in the public interest. And then that the text amendment is also consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan as suggested. It would be with goal number one, land use and goal number six, infrastructure.
So a motion, is there a second?
So, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Three opposed.
No, I have two.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just maybe, because to a good point, Jim does have these memorized off the top of his head maybe for future points of uh operation. We have them on the board just as ready so that we have them. Because I believe that was also Jim that also was one of the ones that.
Yeah, regardless of student.
That's true.
Must have always been.
Well, that's why I can say that I'm on the board.
Uh, and and I would just, if if it's possible in the future, would we be considering text amendments and the like? If we can have an edible version of the file tables that we can add up? And it is we got all that, so.
I will do my best. Sometimes the text amendments proposed are lighter than others.
Right, right.
Um, sometimes can be a bit more cumbersome, but we'll try to provide you a clean copy. Uh, as a matter of general, what we transmit to you is solely planning board's recommendation. And so uh we will try to make sure that at least a clean copy of staff's original proposal for planning board is included within the body of the staff report.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, right, item number four is consider payment and leave request for Paramount Hospital.
Yes, um.
Oh, you're not done?
No, I am not done. Good evening, council. Uh, this item is.
Good evening.
Welcome back. Um, this item is a request from Paramount Hospital um for you all to consider a payment and leave request. And so actually, to present this item before you tonight, I have Richard Blackburn and Jamie Toller with Paramount to come up and explain their request. Um, just a little bit of background before they get started, the TIA was done for the Paramount Hospital project back in May of 2020. Uh, for those of you um that were on council in 2021, you may recall that we adopted at that point some updates to our transportation impact analysis ordinance that actually outlined a calculation um for payment and leave request. This project was considered um and filed prior to that amendment, so just as a talking point for their discussion to get started. Um, but they are providing a cost estimate based on the 100% design plans. And so just wanted to make that note and then I'm going to turn it over to them to present their request before you tonight.
Uh, good evening, council. I'm Richard Blackburn, vice president of operations for Karaman Regional Medical Center Belmont and also vice president of facility and support services for Karaman Health. Uh, so I have in your packet, um, I know there's a lot of detail. Let me see if I can summarize and tag on to what Tiffany just presented. There were actually three uh offsite road improvements that Karaman was uh recommended or required to make as a part of our development on Belmont Avenue campus. We are pursuing um two of those. The third improvement, which is at the intersection of Belmont M L A Road and Firstill Avenue. Uh, we spent over a year trying to acquire construction easement uh from the uh property owner. That property owner um was not receptive to any of our communication. Um, so uh at once we reached the point where we felt as though we weren't going to be able to acquire the necessary construction easement, um, I discerned that that property is actually not in your jurisdiction. That property is actually in Mount Holly's jurisdiction. So I approached the city of Mount Holly at the time, um, Brian DePonte and Greg Beal to let them know about the situation that you were confronting, just to get their input. Wasn't expecting them to really do anything other than to give us their input on order option five B. Subsequently, then I met with interim city management here, Derek Webb, and assistant city manager Kevin Kraus to advise them of the situation we were in. Knowing that you were in a leadership transition, we sort of stood down until Miles was appointed as your city manager and then we came over and met with Miles and Tiffany to give them the details of the situation. So what they suggested is that we would present to you an opportunity to make a payment in lieu of us performing this improvement. We do have 100% construction documents developed, but we just were not able to execute that improvement. I have been in touch with the city of Mount Holly subsequently with Brian, Greg and Danny Jackson, their interim city manager. I believe that city manager Jackson talked with city manager as well on Friday. The ask of staff, planning staff here was that we saw Caramont would seek a a letter of approval from the city of Mount Holly. Since it is in their jurisdiction, I will be candid with you, I do not have that official approval from the city of Mount Holly. So I'm coming to you with our, our request for us to make a payment in lieu of. To whom we make that payment, doesn't matter to us, if we make that payment to Belmont, and then subsequently Belmont makes that payment to Mount Holly or if we make that payment directly to Mount Holly since it's in their jurisdiction. We really are, do not mind to whom we write the check, but we have reached a total impasse in being able to make this improvement to that intersection.
So is that letter of approval, what is it approving? I guess that's what, what, what is Mount Holly going to say in this letter? I mean, that kind of.
I, I, councilman, I, I can only say that what I ask of city management at Mount Holly is that they would approve us making this, removing this requirement for this improvement from our development.
Which we imposed.
Correct, that is correct.
Yes.
That is correct.
But it affects them.
Yes, that's correct.
The intention.
Yes, that's true.
I think Sam has.
Right, so when Mr. Blackburn came and spoke with Tiffany and I, one of the questions we asked was, Mount Holly aware of this payment in lieu consideration at this point, given that the money, the funds will come to the city of Belmont? And Mr. Blackburn said he has to go back and have that conversation with them. And since then, Caramont did that and then interim manager Jackson took it to his council and then they had really like three questions, main questions that they were asking us or asking Caramont and I'll just read these out and then my response and then my, my recommendation if you'd like to, like to have it. So the first thing that they were concerned about was when the TIA process was undertaken several years ago, three years ago, why was the city of Mount Holly not contacted regarding possible improvements in our jurisdiction? And during that time in 2020, the city of Mount Holly was contacted and they reviewed the scope in their planning department at that time. They didn't really have any comments about the improvements and so I called Danny, I told him, Mr. Jackson, that, you know, these three answers to their questions and so that was the first one that yes, that they had an opportunity, that Mount Holly had an opportunity to weigh in on the TIA, if they didn't have any comments for us. Tiffany, please correct me if I misspeak here, she's still here. The second thing was, given that Mount Holly owes a state road, was NCDOT contacted about the turn lane? And if so, what was their response? Of course, NCDOT looks at all the TIA's and then they had this mitigation identified. But one thing that NCDOT can't do is require improvements. If, if, if a developer is on a state road and then they can't have the condemnation authority, then if the city's not going to take it on for condemnation, at that point, NCDOT is like, you know, they did their best, they tried, so NCDOT is aware that this has occurred, that it's, it's on a state road, it's in another municipality, but there's really not much they can do. So I did relay that to Mr. Jackson as well. And then the final thing was from the city of Mount Holly, the payment in lieu, if the payment in lieu of involves road improvement in Mount Holly's jurisdiction, why is it due to the city of Belmont? And really that, I believe when the land development code was created, really they take into consideration that there may be an improvement in another municipality and so that process was not laid out and how we would go about improvements in another jurisdiction and how we would go about the payment in lieu piece of it. And so I did state to Danny Jackson that and I said, you know, it's, it's in, it's in Mount Holly. Why, really, there's like two options that we could do with the payment in lieu process. Is that Caramont could pay the city of Belmont and the city of Belmont can work out some kind of agreement with our attorneys with Mount Holly to get the funds to Mount Holly so that Mount Holly takes over the responsibility of approving that area because it's in Mount Holly and it's required by TIA. There's no need for us to keep $394,000, $294,000 when we can't approve that area, we, we have no authority to go in. If they can't get touch with the property owners, it's, it's in, it's in Mount Holly, so why would we want to? The second thing that Danny and I kind of spoke about was if our council, city Belmont's council, so chose to allow Caramont to have a payment in lieu and just pay city of Mount Holly outright and it takes us out of the process totally, we, we would have to involve our finance department, we would have to involve our label and just a cleaner, cleaner scenario and then they would have to take it on to approve the areas around Caramont Hospital and the city of Mount Holly. And so that's the cleanest and that's the easiest way, that'd be my recommendation is that we, we take it on that, you know, we, we check that box by stating that if you also choose and then of course I think Mount Holly will probably have to vote to consider that somewhat in the future and that's the, that's the thing that, that I think would check the box for us that allows our planning department to provide the zoning approval that Caramont needs to actually get the CO for their administration building over there. So that, they would, they would check our boxes and then they would also check the box that they're a, a good business, they're a good hospital, that they're doing the responsible thing by, by making payment in lieu to the person that's responsible for that intersection.
Question in regards to, because I don't remember correctly, I remember a little bit about this dialogue, not obviously involving y'all, but like Dale Webb for, for instance, whenever we accepted the payment in lieu for road improvements offsite. In this instance, Parks Greg memorized, there, it's like there's a timeline in reverse to when you have to do the improvement, correct? Like, and you're also tied to having to do the improvement that is stipulated in the payment in lieu, is that correct?
There's several options, if, if, if they're doing it, there's a timeline, it's self-imposed. If we're doing it, it's not.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at though is if we do, obviously, which sounds like the right thing to do, have them pay Mount Holly, is Mount Holly any, under any obligation to make sure that that, that infrastructure improvement is done or is it just, there's none? So they could just take that as a check and put it in the general fund?
Well, I think we would have to go towards that, just like.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, I, I don't think they, there, there's any requirement that they do it by a certain time, but I don't think they could just put it in some general.
Is earmarked for improvement?
It depends on what their rules are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that something that we could, in like whatever sort of agreement we come to with them, sort of incorporate that in?
I don't, I don't, I didn't hear that we were selected the second option, just letting them pay direct. We were on the other side.
I mean, yeah. I, um, gosh, what happens if Mount Holly says no after we, you know, that they won't accept the payment in lieu? If they, you know, where, where does that leave us?
Might, might have to figure it out.
Yeah? I, um.
Well, I think that if, if they said no and then at that point, we would have to reconsider negotiation and say that they offered the payment in lieu, Caramont has offered the payment in lieu, whether we accept it or whether we say we're good because you've altered the payment in lieu, I think that that's, that, that would be the decision.
And as you said, they need this, you can't get the CO until you get this taken care of.
We, yes, we need the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tiffany, we need the city of Belmont to give us our zoning permit before we can go to the county to go certificate of occupancy. Before we can go to the state and get state approval, so we'll.
There are multiple levels of approval.
We would almost be, for the sake of time, is that we accept it and then we do the negotiation with Mount Holly. But to your point, what if Mount Holly says no, we're not going to accept it, then?
Yeah, I mean, this is frustrating because I understand, and to, to clarify for, for those watching at home who might not have seen the presentation, this, the, the inability to, to acquire this property seems to stem from a domestic situation of the property owners, each of whom say the ex-spouse is the owner of the property.
Correct, correct, correct.
And this has been going on for how long, since March of 2022?
We, I think, made first contact with them in, in March of 2022, so effectively about a year that we spent before I approached the city of Belmont, the city of Mount Holly first and then subsequently the city of Mount Holly to explain our situation.
And just to clarify, this isn't even a, this, you're not looking for a permanent easement, this would only be a temporary easement for construction. And then when the construction was done, it would, and that's what, to me, is the most frustrating is, you know, it's not even, I can understand some people's reactions, like if you're going to permanently take a portion of their property, but this is just temporary and that seems like it, it, we shouldn't be hung up on this, but I know y'all can't make them do what.
Correct, correct.
Are you able to work around this? I mean, this was put in there for a reason, the construction travel, but have you found a workaround not being able to secure this?
It, it's actually, so far offsite is not having any effect on us that we're aware of. It was a, and I haven't read the TIA, it reduced length of stay at that intersection by three seconds. So it's at, and it's, what's interesting is you're traveling north toward Mount Holly and our requirements listed to create a right drop lane to make a right turn onto Firstville Avenue that got you over to 273. Well, the significant improvement between 273 and Belmont and Mount Holly was actually farther north than the city of Mount Holly actually made the improvements on that is, in our opinion, strictly in our opinion, the more frequently used intersection access.
So that specific improvement, that specific improvement was incorporated, it sounds like more as a precautionary measure, but in hindsight, it's, nothing really moving, you know, whether it's there or not.
Tiffany?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I, it truly was, it's something that was quite, a, a, a little bit surprising to us that it was required so far off of the travel path.
Yeah.
For our traffic.
Sorry.
Stephen?
Yeah, a question for Tiffany.
Well, just based off of what Jason was saying, I was just looking for some clarification of what the impact would be if we don't do this.
Sure, and so we have to bear with me, I'm not Kili Horn, so they could probably be the best expert in terms of being able to talk about the body of their report itself. But my understanding is that there was an alternative looked at here that it wasn't really gotten to be feasible. What we're hearing is that this current proposal is also not feasible for the developer to install. The impacts of not installing it are, I haven't, I mean, really to say, it was just part of the study to say that it was warranted for improvement or identified for improvement. Our ordinance says that they may be required to install it. Our matter of principle says anything that's identified as mitigation should be required and that Caramont has from the beginning wanted to make sure that they're not asking for a way to get around that requirement. They're, they're trying to lead it in every way possible, whether that, if they can't put it on the ground, they're offering the payment in lieu. So from our perspective, I mean, sure, land turn lane is going to be helpful. How helpful is hard to really analyze from our perspective. The more important question, I think, from our end is what are we going to require as a city in, in this situation where they've shown due diligence, they've tried to make efforts, they're not able to make efforts, we're not able to utilize eminent domain, this location is outside of our municipal limits and how do we help them to move forward and provide them guidance on how we'd like to see them proceed? Parks, is it not feasible for us to drop that requirement, is it structured or how, talk about that? And from my perspective, that would be an amendment to the conditional zoning, so that would go to the conditional zoning amendment process?
It'd be a lot easier just to vote on the management.
Which was to make the amendment to Mount Holly directly?
Or, yeah, I mean, there are two options.
Or we accept it and we negotiate with Mount Holly. Now, how long will it take for, so?
That's going to be cumbersome.
Yeah.
And so, we've got $294,000 potentially in a check that can come to the city of Belmont, we can't do anything with it because the work is in Mount Holly. We want to give the check to Mount Holly, but we don't have any way to force them to make this improvement. So where, where does that leave us?
Yeah, to go down the path a little bit further, I think that if, if we accept the check from Caramont and then, and then Mount Holly said, we don't want the check from the city of Belmont, at that point, I think we have to look at the improvements that would be in the city of Belmont related to the Caramont Hospital, accepting that payment in lieu to correct something maybe in the future at Caramont. Tiffany, maybe help me out, but the way I understand it, it has to be related to.
Re-allocated, maybe some other areas that we.
Not just any area in the city, but that area that's related to Caramont and the city of Belmont. So there's a portion, I mean, that, the municipal lines there, just kind of, we, the city of Belmont kind of comes up and kind of grabs the hospital in the abbey and then the other side of the street is Mount Holly. So we would have to look at those areas to try and figure out where, where we can use that $294,000. Maybe in the future, maybe your next phase, maybe something else that Caramont has at that time, we'd probably set this money aside and $294,000 and designate it as a payment in lieu towards Caramont improvement in Belmont at that point. If that's going down the road, another step, you know, if they didn't agree to accept the $294,000.
We would essentially hold it in escrow until a need presents itself.
That would be my understanding, that's similar to what we're holding right now for the Julia Avenue turn lane. They accepted previously, they're in a reserve fund.
As well as, I think there's $100,000 in the cell parking.
Chronicle.
Not, not for the Chronicle.
I mean, does that, you say it was referred methods to give it to Mount Holly, I mean, is this working well? Just hold the money in escrow until a need presents itself, is that? I know you said it's cleaner to give it to Mount Holly, but is this?
Well, it does create certain audit and legal obligations on us, right?
Well, the intent of the $294,000 is that for intersection, that intersection alone. So I wouldn't want to take $294,000 and then hold it when the improvement should have been at that intersection. So I don't think that that, that feel right to me to take, you know, like try to do something in the city of Belmont when really they specified that intersection for improvement. So that's, that's kind of how I was looking at the process as we would, as we would look at it.
But if you, if you make the offer first and they decline, then we really don't have a choice at that point.
At that point, right then, we, then we fall back on, hey, well, let's look at an improvement around Caramont in Belmont's limits.
I was wondering, the verbiage that you needed in the motion to do what you were saying.
I was moved to accept the payment in lieu under the condition that we, that the payment be made to the city of Mount Holly.
Second.
Is that, will that work for you sufficient?
I think that would be sufficient and.
That's the way I understood it, that, that they would be okay with that.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, any other discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you very much. Shouldn't have thought about that, though. It's not like it's a council or something. All right, next item on the agenda is public hearing on the proposed provisions to the water protection order. Understanding motion to a public hearing. Second, all those in favor?
I did want to mention that this was properly advertised, uh, twice, so that anybody that had an interest had an opportunity.
Did anyone have such an interest? Uh, no, okay. Moved to come out of public hearing.
All of those in favor? All right, a lot of easy.
Uh, well, I think we have to approve, I, I moved to approve the proposed provisions to the watershed protection ordinance.
I'll say it.
All right, that's number six on your agenda, just to correct.
There is an ordinance that has to be approved as well for that.
Yeah, that's what we're voting on, yep, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I did.
Mark the seven. All right, number seven, Jay, Jay Paul Ford Center facility discussion.
You want to take a little break, because I think this one might go?
Okay, yeah, we can take a five minute break, then come back at eight seventeen. All right, eight one, maybe an extra three minutes. So, well.
Or actually?
It's a good workshop.
Yes, I am overall.
We're losing a lot of our.
Yes, I know. What happened to that? Alright, next item on the agenda is a facility discussion on the Ford Center.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilor. I'm just gonna go back and give you some background on how we got to the point of this discussion today. During the July tenth city council meeting, we talked about the Jay Paul Ford Center. Now the city rec is operational. The purpose of that discussion will determine the direction for the future use of the facility. And we talked about a few considerations that that no fund for budgeted, it's not included in the five year capital program plan. The building condition assessment had not occurred at that time. A future use or change of use must consider building code requirements if renovations were considered. Would the city take the lead? That staff would manage the design bidding and structure process. We also had an existing tenant at that time and what we may have to do with an existing tenant if renovations occur. You all directed me to obtain pricing on a facility condition assessment. And then at the next meeting on August seventh, we brought back the actual proposal for a condition assessment. And the pricing is listed and also the actual proposal is attached to the agenda item. And so it shows that thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars in all inclusive assessment. And then those like two alternates provided as well for reductions of certain items, often of one being six hundred dollars. And often two being thirty-six hundred dollars. You all decided that just to take the, take it as information at that time for the proposal and to speak with Gaston County to understand permitting requirements before moving forward. So I met with Mr. Brian Skiba. Mr. Brian Skiba is here today. He's with Gaston County Plan and Growth and Development. And we both toured the property. And I asked Mr. Mr. Skiba could he attend that way if we talk about certain things that he, by his professional opinion on those matters. And I appreciate Mr. Skiba being here tonight.
Very patiently sitting through the first half of our meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Also, since that time, our existing tenant decided not to move forward with a lease for next year. And his lease was going to expire in this month. And also want to thank staff that did a really good job. If y'all come by the Ford Center recently, cleaned up the property, they eliminated trees up, they, they came debris away. Really cleaned up the property. And so I appreciate staff and Bill, Bill Carroll and his staff for providing that sort of stores. And so really at this, this point, we're just seeking direction on the next steps for the property. If you would like to hear anything from Mr. Skiba as far as the discussions of what we talked about while we were actually on site with any change of views. So currently it's, it's a recreation center. We're not doing recreation activities over there. So whatever the next thing is for the recreation center would be a change of use. And then Mr. Skiba can, can provide the details on what may require as far as exit requirements for handicap accessible restaurants.
I, I think it'd be good to hear that. Unless you've got more to?
No, that's fine.
Oh, I think that too because one of the main concerns would be ADA compliance.
I will say I feel woefully unprepared after watching Tiffany's presentation about what I'm about to say to you. But so I, I went over with your manager and kind of looked at the building. And I will say upfront that it is hard to talk about what ifs when you're talking about building code and what you're going to do. So that extreme can go from, from one place to another. And it really, a lot of it also depends on how you structure. Whether you're going to maintain the building yourself or whether you're going to sell it to someone else or however you're going to work a lease agreement. Government stipulations are a whole lot more stringent than others as far as ADA accessibility and things of that nature. We as government are supposed to be in compliance a hundred percent of the time on everything that we already offer. Because it is a, a program that we offer to the citizens and it's already supposed to be in compliance. And we have unlimited funds, correct? So.
Maybe the county.
So to kind of caveat the conversation with that, there is a, there is a multitude that could, could have to be done based off of where you go in the future with it. So I would say that you need to come up with a plan or an idea that you want to do with it. And then we will, we will help you move forward with that on the county side as far as kind of determining bathroom counts and accessibility. Typically what we would see in a building like this though is that you would work kind of backwards from that point. And you would look at it and say, we have X number of entrances in the building that will support X amount of occupancy inside the building. And we have X number of bathrooms that are already there. And you would back into something that you could, that you could do that would not cost you a terrible amount of money to outfit that, that building. So currently there are only two restrooms in the building, neither one of which I would consider to be ADA accessible at this point. You've got some issues with the accessibility ramp that need to be addressed already as far as the condition it is currently in. How it enters the building and through what appears to be the remnants of a kitchen area that would probably need to kind of go away. You're not supposed to enter or exit through a kitchen. So there, there's a couple items that probably need to be taken care of already. But other than that, the building looks to be in check. Like I say, it is, it is very difficult to answer hypotheticals. But I'd be glad to, to take whatever you've got and try to, to answer it for you.
I have one question. Let's say for instance something really simple. Does that one have an art studio there and the city would rent that building to me? Would all the ADA part fall into place there too as well?
Yes, ma'am. So if you, if y'all decide that you wanted to rent it out to someone and they were to come in as a, pretty much anything that you'd do at this point other than previously it was a, what I would consider to be like a community building. So anything other than that that you use the building for, then you're gonna have to bring it up to standards, which would be ADA. We kind of tell people that you, you start at the parking lot and work your way in. You have to be able to park. You have to have an accessible parking. You have to be able to navigate into the actual building. And then we look for things like restrooms and things of that nature.
And then there's also other things like fire suppression and.
And see, that's where the, that's where the inevitable questions come in. All those would be based off of how, how we're going to use, how many people are we going to get in the building? So when, when building code starts looking at a building to address it, we're looking at how many people can you hold in the building? And it's not, for instance, the last gentleman that was there said, I'm ever have more than twenty-five people in a building. Unfortunately, the code looks at it and says, based off of the square footage that you have and based off of how you're going to use it, you could have up to X amount of people in a building. And that's what we have to look at based off of. So that can go from one extreme to the other based off of how you would choose or whom you would choose to lease it to and they would come in and want to use that building. Now, we are always available to sit down and speak with if y'all decide you're gonna put it out for lease or however you want to occupy a building. We're always available to have those conversations with whomever that come in so we can help them decide whether they've got the funding to use the building in the proper way.
So just to clarify, in its current state as a community building, that we're not needing really any significant ADA or other strategy required?
You've, you've got normal maintenance, yeah, I saw while I was out there that we, that you would need to do. But other than that, you're not required to do anything at this point because it is, it is same as a, as a use that is already in place.
Well, I mean, the immediate question presented to us is what do we, you know, in terms of a facility assessment, what do we want to do in terms of the options that have been presented? But I think, you know, the value is a broader question of what do we want to do with the facility? So I don't know how exactly, you know, ultimately the question we have to answer is what do we do with the proposals that, that we receive? But I think obviously we should probably have a broader discussion.
Well, how, how broad is that definition of a community building? I mean, what, what could that potentially?
So I would, in my opinion, that would be something that you as Belmont, the city of Belmont would have to own and maintain and use for your use as a public community building. I believe once you would enter into some kind of agreement with someone else to occupy that space, that in my opinion, that would leave that definition of turning to something as a business and not as a community building that you operate.
So right now we could conduct classes, could be a senior center underneath the city's umbrella?
Yes, because I believe that's the way it's been operated up until now. So you would just be continuing that use. I will say that, back to my previous comment, you are considered, in government, you have to be ADA accessible. You have to have all the stuff that is required by the law all the time. There would, even if it was not maintained for a while, it still has to be in place. So handicap parking needs to be addressed, the ADA ramp, things of that nature would still need to be addressed in the current state, even though it has continued in use as, as being. You would need to do some maintenance to that building.
And the bathrooms would have to be addressed as well?
So because the bathrooms, if they've always been that way and you've not done anything to them, then what you would need to do and what the, the guidelines for ADA say that you're supposed to have a plan in place, that you are working towards that plan. So I would say if you decide that you want to keep that building yourself and you have already identified that it, it, there are some ADA issues in that building that need to be addressed. Then y'all need to formulate a plan saying, we know that these places, these conditions exist, we need to put some funding aside. And here's the plan of time that we're going to address those and get that taken care of. I think we, and please don't quote me on this, but in seventy-six, when the federal, when the ADA guidelines came out, you were supposed to kind of do an assessment of all of your structures that were in place. And formulate that plan and start working towards it at that time. The code kind of looked at it and said, between now and then, anything that you take on that's new, new structures that you buy or new buildings that you build, they should all be in compliance and you should be maintaining those as you move along.
So at a minimum in its current use, it sounds like parking and access to the building are sort of the minimum threshold that would have to be updated, right?
Yes.
And specifically with the parking, can you elaborate on what may be required there?
So for parking is actually a requirement of your zoning as far as the number of parking spaces that are required. And then building code takes that number and says, based on the number that are required by your zoning, you have to have X amount of number that are handicap accessible, that are van accessible and things I mentioned. So for instance, let's say that your, your zoning says that you have to have fifty parking spaces. Then we would say two of those have to be handicap accessible, one of which has to be van accessible. And then they have to join to the actual entrance to the building. It'd be somewhere to where I can park and I can navigate myself into the building that is on a hard, smooth, flat surface for me to transition to the building.
What about the state of the surface itself? I mean, I haven't been out there in a while. There are like potholes and things that you would, particularly for handicap folks, that would be an issue even to maintain in its current state, that would have to be.
So for us, we don't look at the actual parking lot and say, oh, these places that we would focus on would be those handicap parking spaces and then that transition area that goes into the building. The parking lot itself would be something that your ordinance would speak to as to whether you're required to pay that parking or not.
Now, Miles, the current state of the parking lot is not in the best condition, correct?
Decrepate is a good place.
Just trying to paint the picture.
Not exactly moving ready.
Yeah.
We'll go back to Jim's comments about, you know, taking up, do, do we, do we go and consider the facility condition assessment or what options there? At this point, I mean, I, I don't need to go for it at that point yet on the discussion because I think that there's several options that council could consider at this time. One option, of course, is to maintain it as a recreation center. That's, that's an option. We don't do anything. We still program it for certain activities as a rec center. Option two would be council determines that we don't need the building anymore and you sell it through the property disposal process, sell the property. That's another option. Another option is that you lease it to someone, maybe by using a broker to go to the market to see what the market dictates. And if, if the market dictates that there needs to be an office building there, then, or whatever else, a restaurant or whatever somebody would like to lease it for. Then you go to the market rate of actual lease at that point. And you could structure some kind of lease agreement using the city attorney's office, possibly by creating like allowance, outfit allowances. Where the end user actually upfits the building and maybe the city provides an outfit allowance, structures the lease for multiple years. And then, you know, the payback over time. And then plus we have a building that's renovated for us at the end of the lease term, whether we renew the lease or it goes to the next person that's out there. So, I mean, those are like three options that are, that are out there, kind of have the broker option, the sell it option, keep it as is option.
So just to kind of, I think we could do two of these fairly quickly. And this might be, we might need Zips and Puff as well, but do we see a current need for the facility currently as a recreation, considering we have a recreation development?
We just spent thirteen million dollars.
No, no, I'm just, again, yes, I said, just go down the list, which I don't think there is, but.
I mean, I, I know that we programmed this building pretty heavily. I don't know the exact answer, if we actually need to do any more programming, programming over there than what we have over here.
We don't.
Zips, come to the mic, Zips.
Yes, and answer your question. You know, we don't need to, but I'm not gonna turn out a private.
But there is no immediate need right now.
Um, thanks, Zips. That was really my question. I just wanted to clarify that. I, me personally, I'll just state my opinion on this. I do have to like to sell the, the, the property itself. I believe it's an asset to the community and the downtown area. That would be very hard to recover in the future. I don't know again, council, Jim, either.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the best option is some sort of long-term lease where we let somebody else fix it up. But then give them enough time to recover their investment in the building. Because I think it'd be very easy for us to spend a lot of money trying to figure out what to do with this thing. Or we could put it on the market and let the market figure out what the best use for it is. Have somebody else come in and pay to, you know, upgrade it, fix all the problems with it and turn it into something that produces a little income for the city rather than, you know, like bottomless pit.
Well, it's been on the CIP and, you know, everything moves up and down. The CIP comes on, off. So I mean, the lease method is guaranteed if we can't do it, that we will get that building brought up to standards.
Well, and just to kind of add to that point too, it's not currently in the budget, nor did we include it in the budget for any of our long-term strategic plans to do anything in-house to do it. So just kind of clarifying there. Just again, two cents, I do know Main Street Board does also have the Economic Vitality Committee. I'd be interested, you know, that could be a potential partnership with the Gastonias Business and Economic Development to kind of work together on trying to put someone in that building, just out of curiosity. Because we have a group that could do so, not to volunteer you guys, Phil, but we do have a group that does have the capabilities and the resources, I think, or connections to try to fill that place. So just two cents there.
Yeah, I'm open to all possibilities. I do think, I know I've talked with, with Richard a little earlier. And I think we have something similar with the Jonas Group at the old Planning and Zoning Building, but they, they left after one year, I think, or something like that. That, you know, as part of the lease, doing some up and to the property. I, I do think that would probably be the best bet and just, you know, open ourselves to, to whatever and try to find a really good fit.
Apartment?
That's honestly.
I agree. I agree. I think it's a two-way one. As I said, I'm not, I'm not the one who understands that either. I'd like to reserve the right, you know, to find, locate a tenant, whether it's through the market or, you know, someone coming to us and seeing if we can, you know, realize some regular value instead of depleting. I was thinking fine, if you will.
So do we need to do anything with respect to the proposals that have been presented? I mean, it doesn't seem, it doesn't sound like it.
We took its information last time.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we just, I mean, do we need to?
They're just seeking direction.
Seeking direction, yes, sir. If, if the direction is to lease it to a, a new tenant, then I could bring back, we can bring back options, whether that's through the Economic Vitality Committee. Or whether that's through a broker, I can bring both those items back at some point in time to see if we can get further directions. Because I have a direction now that's kind of, we know where we are at this point.
Or both, or both, yeah. I think a broker might have a bar pool of tenants.
There's no immediate cost to us for that. We only pay property leases.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, again, this is just my two cents and I don't know, Phil, if you have any. Maybe we start with the Economic Vitality Committee since that is a local organization of ours, one of our boards. And then if it doesn't, doesn't become fruitful, then let's the broker agents.
Oh, here's a question. I'm sorry. I, I, is, are we sure that that property is within the Main Street's domain?
If I remember correctly, wasn't there a map that expanded it?
I don't know if we ever actually voted on that.
Voted, we not.
Just across the street from, just outside of the boundary.
So then it's not currently in the scope of the Main Street?
Well, I, I don't see having a broker and having Main Street working on it as mutually exclusive options. I would think they would probably work together anyway, but.
Was there been technical issues then or structural that did not need within their zone to have a hand in this future?
You know about that one?
Yeah, Main Street, all the time, the Main Street area, then.
Well, you know, it is in the historical district, so we do have a historic preservation of the Main Street Committee.
So eventually, you know, if you, you take it a step, if you, you let the Economic Vitality Committee determine it or anybody that wants to use it, at some point it's gotta come back through lease processes anyway, so.
Yeah, what you'd probably want.
I think they could probably do that. Because they were involved with the, they, they extended some, extended some efforts with respect to middle school. And I don't think middle schools in their district either at the present, that would also be, that would be voted to add in. So I, I, I don't think they're obligated from.
From my perspective, I, I would say cast as wide a net as possible. I mean, do you use the broker or do you want to use a local committee? I mean, just exercise due diligence to follow.
If it's a, if it's a broker, it's a contract that at that point, I'll grant it by the council, letting labor approval, is that correct?
Yes.
So I could take that out and then it depends out that we need to actually hire brokers. We start, we can start with the Economic Vitality Committee.
That's assuming, Phil, that.
Well, we actually have a broker on our committee as well who would, Jennifer Church is a real estate broker. So she, she could help catch the wide net.
That's why I was kind of alluding to, I'll leave them in. We can do it in-house and at the same time, I'm kind of a no-brainer in my opinion for that.
I'll have discussion with the Economic Vitality Committee and then I'll make a determination at that point. I think that we maybe need our, Jennifer Church or another broker, I'll bring that, that's a contract.
Sounds fair. Alright. Item number eight, it's an update on the Recreation Advisory Board Athletic Subcommittee.
Yes, yes, in your packet you have the recommendations from the Recreation Advisory Board. I think we have four items there. You need to read them.
That's okay. You can read.
The only, the only thing that we had in question was who is gonna select these four members? Recreation Advisory Board, I see the council, the board, the subcommittee board.
My thought would be with the subcommittees to let the board themselves do it. That's what the Environmental Sustainability Board does, I think. That's what Main Street does. I don't think we want to get so far in the weeds. I, I would, Parks and Rec.
I agree. I agree.
So we should be able to move forward at our next scheduled meeting this month and start getting the process together. We're not gonna try to select all four members.
I would start with a couple of the people that applied for board membership a couple of months ago. They were strong candidates.
So okay, I'll get, I'll get the change and we'll start that process.
I think that's an excellent idea to incorporate public voice in that subcommittee, something sort of new.
I agree.
So Parks and Rec is gonna get the ball rolling on this at their upcoming meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, because obviously there's a lot of interest in this, as I think you've heard earlier, so.
And that's been a recurring theme here recently.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it's a good opportunity for us to kind of look at, you know, all athletic, you know, operations facilities, you know, it's a, it's, it's, you know, so.
Any questions, Chris Evans? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next we have a rule of the Transportation Advisory Committee Guidelines, rules and procedure description.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, first, Council. At the special meeting, held September thirteenth, council directed staff to create Transportation Advisory Committee Description Guidelines and Rules and Procedures. And just to go down, just to recap the special meeting items. Number one was that transportation committee. And that was due back on today. Also the transportation committee, who was the citizen designation, which we're bringing back at the October sixteenth workshop. We also had a speed reduction study in downtown that's currently underway, led by the police department. We also had the pedestrian plan, Vision Zero. We have that planned for the October sixteenth workshop. And then the traffic calming policy, it's now on the website, easy to find. And staff is reviewing that to make recommendations at the November meeting. As far as the makeup of the transportation committee, the mayor appointed council liaisons, Richard Turner and Jason Mopel. And then the staff representatives on this committee consist of, the police department captain Aaron Black, he will serve as the staff liaison. Which is what I would consider the chair on the staff side for us. The planning department is director Tiffany Farah, she'll be serving on the committee. The public works department, the maintenance supervisor Jake Camber Odo, sorry to say. He's the maintenance supervisor of the public works department. He was on the committee. And then for administration is assistant city manager Kevin Kraus and myself on an interchangeable role there. Inside the packet, you can see that there are this description and guidelines and the rules and procedures. And I appreciate city clerk Jamie for preparing these, this document here. So I'm not gonna go through all of it, but I do want to point out that item number five, membership, five, number five. That one member of the City of Belmont Planning and Zoning Board is considered one of the Belmont residents. So we thought that that would probably be a good idea, that the Planning and Zoning Board has a member, has a resident. And we, and then the decision from council was that we have two members in the public, the other member. The other member of the public, um, would be the person that does not serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, and that's the applications that, uh, we're receiving and interviewing the, uh, potential candidates at the October sixteenth workshop. Also would point out that, uh, this is a non-voting board, and then that there are not minutes that will be prepared, like your typical minutes, where you get minutes and you, the board with approval. Uh, we're considering these to be, um, just meeting summaries, we have the agenda prepared by the staff liaison, Captain Black, and then we go to the committee meeting, and then the summaries come out. It won't be like a, a word-for-word designation of what took place, it's just a recap, a meeting summary. And those are just a few of the things that I did want to, I did want to point out.
My question is regarding the composition of the committee, because I was under the impression, and I may be wrong, that there were going to be two sort of at-large public, uh, representatives from the public. And I see that one, you've got here, uh, certain, certain dual role, they're, they're resident, but they're also having to be on the planning and zoning. We also have additional planning and zoning staff on the committee already as well, right?
One of them is the actual planning and zoning board, and so you've got the people that are selected to the planning and zoning board. So we're thinking that the resident, one of those residents would serve as a resident, so the planning and zoning board could appoint that person to serve on this committee. And then, um, in house, there's the planning department, which Tiffany is the planning director, so she would serve as like a, a staff, you know, steward. That's just a recommendation about how we were thinking, um, maybe it should be, uh, created, plus that one addition, additional citizen that will be interviewed by you all. So really, I guess the interview piece would be like one, one citizen. We could change it, if y'all like amend that document there.
Well, my recollection was consistent with Jason, I thought it was. To, in addition to planning board member.
Yeah.
I think what we're trying to do, I mean, if you get someone who's on the planning and zoning board, who's also a resident, they can't help but look at the issues through that lens, planning and zoning. I think what we're trying to do, or at least I was, try to get two citizens, just to get that approach to the questions at hand. Not necessarily a technical approach, but just, you know, a citizen.
I agree, I don't remember, I recall two at-large, if you want to call it that, and then one from P and Z. Because if ever I requested that we added someone from P and Z, these I think would be interesting perspective, because they're the frontline, along with Tiffany and team, um, seeing these types of projects come through.
If we have two citizens, I mean, that gives us the option that one of them is, is not available, but there will be some citizen representation.
Good point, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
So we'll amend it by stating number five, membership, number six, that instead of one additional City of Belmont resident, we'll put two additional City residents, and we'll keep that number five as it is.
Uh, let's see, I think we, um, have to amend further down the paragraph also, where it says the Belmont resident number, number six, the additional City of Belmont resident would be appointed by the Belmont residents. We'll have to make that plural.
Yeah.
And should we stagger those terms?
Yeah, yeah, we do with all of our other units.
So we have one P and Z and two.
At-large, if you want to call it, and residents. And then the two residents, as it states, is appointed by council, you know, the one P and Z is appointed by P and Z. And then obviously, mine also looks like one of the staff members.
So we're not striking the planning and zoning member? We're adding an additional member to the committee?
Right.
Right?
The citizen terms, it's probably here, but I'm not seeing how long those terms.
I thought it was three years.
Three years or anything. The P and Z one is actually one year, but the two citizen, non-P and Z ones, three.
That one was, um, kind of like, you, like that process around, that one was like, you guys, you appoint your committees every year. They could choose every year.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Like what we do with our own committee assignments.
Yeah, it's, well, they're kind of weird to match up the timeframes on those two. Because you have somebody who's on P and Z for another two years, and you want to do a three-year term or something.
Right.
It becomes a train wreck, so.
Yeah, and then if you're kind of in this onset, you don't have to pick somebody that is just starting their three-year term, you can just pick somebody that, you know, so it gives them flexibility on the two.
And then, again, just for public consumption, and I can't remember if you said it, Miles, but it's quarterly meetings. And it's in bullet number two, they're reading the meetings, you know, the committee shall hold meetings at least once a quarter. Is NCDOT, have we talked to them, are they going to be able to, are they agreeable to that?
They are, we've actually, uh, already met with them once, uh, which was last Monday.
Their last Monday?
Yeah, last Monday, we met with, uh, multiple five, six, seven NCDOT folks, along with council, uh, liaisons, and then staff. And the, uh, so they, they committed a, a chair on their side, and then we committed a chair on our side, that would, that would set the actual quarterly meetings down, and so.
Very.
Yeah, that's, cool.
All right, any other discussion on the, uh, rules? Uh, I have a motion to the House.
Motion to adopt the Transportation by Degree Committee, um, with the amendment to, to change to two, or to bullet six, under five, to have two at-large residents, and then, to Jim's point, changing the paragraph underneath it, to make residents, residents plural, so adding an S there.
A second.
Yep.
All of those are better. All right, number ten, a question from the ESP board for a grant on a composting pilot program.
All right, good evening.
Thanks for your patience.
I was about to say, I shouldn't have brought that this one, or, I'm sorry, y'all.
Um, I'm the plan, the planning department staff liaison for the Environmental Sustainability Board, and I'm just here to introduce Maria Cortone, the ESP board. I'm sure. Well, thank you for, uh, hearing my proposal, and, uh, it's been a long night, so I'll try to be brief. Some people here know probably more about composting than I do, but, uh, why do we need to compost? Food's the largest single category of material placed in municipal landfills. As for this audit, we have this live, estimated at twenty-four percent by the EPA. When you put organic waste into a landfill, it emits biogas, which is fifty percent carbon dioxide and fifty percent methane, which is even worse for the environment in the short term. And municipal landfills are responsible for about fourteen percent of all human-related methane emissions in 2021. If, however, you compost those materials using aerobic composting methods, you produce no methane and only a little bit of carbon dioxide. So it's a much, um, cleaner way of disposing of our organic waste. Once you turn it into compost, what good is it? It turns harmful waste into a valuable product. Using compost can improve soil health, can slow erosion and runoff. It can conserve water by retaining moisture. It can reduce the need for pesticides, and it sequesters carbon in the soil. Why provide composting service? This falls under the category of providing quality services to Belmont residents. Home composting requires a level of knowledge and dedication that's not prevalent in the general population. It's also simply not possible for many, depending on where they live. My HOA would have a fit if I tried to put a compost pit pile in my backyard. So providing composting service makes composting available to a much wider group of people. And, um, if you make it available, then it will be used more. Commercial composters can also accept many more types of waste than a backyard composting, um, process. I believe composting is the next logical step in reducing the solid waste stream, similar to recycling. I'm old enough to remember when we didn't recycle anything. And, um, you know, that's been a great improvement, and it has reduced the amount that we're sending to our landfills by law. And so if we, some that get to diverting food waste on a large scale, we can also slow the rate of landfill use and benefit the environment. So it seems like a win-win to me. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality is offering food waste reduction grants. Proposals are due by October twenty-fifth of this year, and the project period starts February first. Uh, it runs for up to a year, and they require cash match, and twenty percent of the grant overruled. This grant would give Belmont an opportunity to educate the citizens on composting, engage a level of interest at a reduced cost. Uh, the bottom note was just for the city staff, they have to get their reports done before we can submit the proposal. We have a proposal in hand from a company called Crown Town Compost. They successfully conducted a similar pilot program for the town of Davidson last year. That pilot was continued, and it was successful. They continued it and expanded it this year. The pilot would include a six-month pilot, including weekly hauling and the biodegradable liners that you need, five drop-off locations with a total of thirty roll carts, signage for the roll carts. Up to three hundred and seventy-five families would be provided with small buckets for collecting the, the food waste in their home. Crown Town would communicate with the participants and provide education on the process, and deliver ten yards of premium compost annually to the City of Belmont for their use or distribution, however we decided we wanted to do it. There, um, the amount that they quoted for those products and services is twenty thousand two, two hundred dollars. The roll carts look kind of like this, about the size of a regular, you know, recycling cart or a garbage cart. They're secure, and they have combination lock on, and the code will be supplied to the participants, and that will help to keep them from being contaminated. So as people sign up, they will get instruction on what can go into the bin, and they'll receive the code, and the, um, the recyclable, um, liners, and the, um, things to collect. What can go in that bin? fruits and vegetables, meat, bones, cheese, coffee grounds and filters, eggshells, leftovers, grain, pasta, bread, rice, paper napkins, paper towels, so lots of different materials. Town of Davidson's pilot was for two hundred and fifty participants, they achieved eighty-eight percent of that. In the first four months of the pilot, Davidson diverted fourteen thousand plus pounds of food waste. The next page, uh, I listed out for city staff what the city responsibilities would be, including the grant application, administration, obtaining the sites, publicity, uh, collecting contact information, and, um, various things like that. Evaluation of the program's success we got through participant surveys, and also through weight of collections that Crown Town Compost would provide us with, uh, the weight that was collected from each location every week. They provide monthly reports. And then we would have to produce a final report for the state of North Carolina. City financial commitment. In addition to the twenty thousand two hundred quote, we thought we should add line item to the grant because of the printing, mailing, and marketing. So the total project cost would be twenty-five thousand, the twenty thousand, twenty percent required cash match would be five thousand dollars from, um, the city, and the grant would fund twenty thousand. And it is a reimbursement-type project, so as we spend, you know, we would have to spend money, get those seats sent back to the state for reimbursement, and they will hold ten percent until the final report's submitted. As far as schedule, I'm embarrassed that none of my proofreaders caught the discrepancy. The year is wrong on this page. I saw that tonight as I was looking at it one more time. Uh, it's February, between February first, twenty twenty-four, and January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Practically speaking, the majority of the costs are going to be in the months right prior to pilot launch, where we have to purchase the bins and the liners, and do all the publicity and marketing and things like that. So it will definitely be front-loaded. But I think the pilot should start after the Garibaldi Festival at the end of April, to take advantage of that marketing opportunity. We also have farmers' market in Red White and Belmont that we could use for marketing this pilot. So, and August first, twenty twenty-four launches the latest that would finish in the required timeframe. You know, it, we can, it's our, it would be our choice when we wanted to do it, if that seemed like a, a reasonable timeframe. And that would allow costs to be spread across, across the end of this fiscal year, the current one, and a little bit into the next fiscal year. Next.
I'm sorry, were you done, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step up, we were not done yet.
I, just a.
Go ahead, we'll, we'll take questions at the end.
What happens when the pilot ends? At the end of the pilot, the city could choose to continue, abandon, or expand the project. If the city continues, chooses to continue with Crown Town Compost, they said they would charge approximately eighteen hundred a month to service the bins weekly. Eighteen hundred a month to service all of those bins that they come weekly. If the city, city chooses to abandon the project, the bins could possibly be resold to someone else if they needed them. There are businesses that use them. And the participants could be offered an option to subscribe to collection at their own cost. Additional grant funding might be available if we decide to expand the program, or might include composting in the next solid waste contract negotiation, if enough people seem to be interested. And so my request is approval to submit the application, um, for this grant, pending further discussion. If we apply, the city still has the option, even if we got the grant, that you could, uh, say no, we're not going forward. There's nothing, nothing to sign at this point, but it's just, it's more or less approval to proceed with the application, and, uh, who would say that the city would provide the five thousand that we would need to conduct this pilot? Questions?
Jason had a question. You, you actually covered mine, thank you.
I can kind of also, the council liaison, the board has been working on applying for a grant in this area for quite some time. And again, they've been diligently working with city staff liaison as well, because, again, I, I think this is a, I think we should do it. I mean, it's a very low cost, and again, I think they've done their homework on this, and this has been a project for quite some while. But, um, again, I just wanted to put my two cents on that. Sorry, take a little late, so I'm slowing down a little bit.
I'm in agreement, my dad was actually the first person in Lincoln County to start a landfill program, and won a bachelor award for that, so I'm really familiar with the facts, I can be good stuff with that. So the more we can keep out of landfills, and things, I think, so thanks for that idea.
I'm very mentioned, so we're on it.
And this could be fairly cutting-edge for municipalities to try to take up the sword on this one, right? Because there's not that many.
We would be the first in Gaspin County, for sure.
That's what I thought.
I have to check.
Oh, like the other cities, right?
And nobody has, has this service, so.
That ongoing carrying cost of the eighteen hundred a month, that was based on how many participants?
That was three hundred and seventy-five families, um, and body collection sites.
Is this something that, like, businesses could participate in, like, if there's a sample?
You know, um, I'll show my ignorance, I don't know how businesses contract for solid waste removal in the city of Belmont. I don't know if the city provides it, or if they contract their own. But yes, Crown Town does offer, um, composting services. But yes, Crown Town does offer composting services to businesses. There's also another provider, Earth Farms Organic up in Dallas that also handles, they do more business work.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because you're looking at how much food is disposed of in your average restaurant at the end of the night.
Well, yeah, that's what I was saying, like, somebody drops a pizza on the floor, they can't sell it, and it usually ends up with the trash, which, you know, breaks my heart for a number of reasons. But, you know, yeah, so it'd also be a good way to, you know, get some value out of that.
So let me ask you a quick question. Startup cost, twenty-five thousand, twenty thousand, big grant, five thousand from the city. Future cost, eighteen hundred dollars a month, twenty-one thousand, six hundred a year. Does, are there any grant opportunities for that, or is that on, is the city?
You're saying there's a possibility of the potential?
There's a possibility if we decided we wanted to expand, that we could apply for other grants. There was one last spring that was a larger grant. So we decided that we wanted to go on. I would be more than happy to be looking into ways to expand and.
Have you all talked about locations, like as a destination to council or?
Not yet, but they should be geographically dispersed and close to, I would say, where people travel. So that it would make it easy for, you know, a mom going by this place. So if we get approval to apply, then we'll start talking about that.
Any other questions? Are you motion to approve?
I'll say it.
Motion in a second, although it's better. Carrie.
Thank you very much. So happy.
Keep you home now. Is that why you're happy?
A while longer, right?
All right. So we have our reports, are included in the packet. And then we'll move into other business. Start with Jason.
Oh, you're starting from this one?
Yeah, shake hands up.
Sorry, I actually do have a few items on my, I know it's been a long time, but I'll try to get straight with you quickly. So really, kind of the first thing, and this is, I'm glad we waited until this week to discuss this, because last week I was probably a little too hot to talk about it. But the issue that's been going on sort of fast since school started at the Belmont Town Center. As most of us are probably aware of, watching at home, we have an issue that's partly designed and partly just bad behavior that's going on with a lot of our businesses located in close to our community, middle school and high school that both run out within five minutes of each other every day. So it's created a situation where you have hundreds of kids descending on Chick-fil-A, Harris Teeter, Starbucks, Pizza Places there, Travis, all those businesses in that town center. It's been very disruptive. If you're not aware, they're seeing a lot of theft, they're seeing a lot of fights, really bad behavior within the establishments, within their restrooms. It's been really disconcerting to hear a lot that's going on. And, you know, we're not in the parenting business, and neither are these businesses. But I was actually by, and I should mention too, if you're not aware, that Chick-fil-A has now been forced to close their dining room between the hours of three and five Monday through Friday because of this. Which really sort of gnawed at me as a business owner myself, the fact that you have to close your business or limit your hours because of bad behavior. So I don't know exactly what can be done. Again, we're not in the parenting business, but I do think that this is not Belmont. This is not the way Belmont's ever been. And I'm sure it's not the way that those who continue to move here expected it to be. It's not, it's not everybody, obviously. We've got a few bad hours. You know, they're causing things like Chick-fil-A closure in the afternoons for everyone. So, but it is, it has gotten to be really disruptive. There's a lot of parents that will come and park there in the afternoons, taking up parking spaces for patrons. Even having signs there for no loitering and parking is for patrons only. It still happens to the point that there's no parking available for the patrons. So I know this is a complex problem, and it's not one that we're going to solve overnight. But I think what it started as a school issue is quickly becoming a city issue, particularly for our businesses in that area of town. I know that our police department, in talking with Chief Falls, has instituted special checks with Bullen every afternoon, as I understand it, between three, fifteen, and four, just to provide some more visibility, hopefully deter some of that bad behavior. But, you know, I know we've got a shortage of bus drivers. I think a lot of that stems from bad behavior too. So I just think that when we have businesses that are having to serve as places for students to loiter and parents to sit and take up parking places for one to two hours every afternoon, it's a big disruption for our businesses. I know Harris Teeter has kind of, you know, historically kind of looked the other way. I was actually in there this afternoon, and they actually had, believe it or not, some of their asset protection people in store in plain clothes, just observing what was going on. So that was pleasing to see. But, I mean, you've got kids walking into Harris Teeter with book bags and walking out with twelve pack of beer and, you know, candy or whatever else they just had to carry out. I've asked them about no book bag policy, and they said, you know, if they were to do something like that, they'd have to institute a program. So, you know, picture a guy or a gal come in off a hiking trip, and they've got their bag with them, you know? And that could lead to confrontations, you know, with people coming in the store. So I think it's a complex problem. I think it's one that, you know, potentially if the city, maybe the council decides to take it up, that it would be a joint effort, you know, with maybe involving the principals of the two schools, Chief Falls and his staff, city manager, to look at potential strategies to mitigate those disruptions going forward. And the other thing too, I think, that could potentially come out of this is maybe, and this is a broader discussion for another day, looking at sort of the personnel and the asset allocation within the police department to see would potentially be more advantageous or efficient in some of these areas to possibly reallocate some existing personnel, and if we need to add additional staff. Because this is, this is a problem that's gotten out of control in my mind. There were eighty kids just last Friday descended into Harris Teeter. And picture that when you're on your grocery shopping trip. Kids riding around, three or four of them on the motorized handicap carts through the aisles. Okay, this is a problem. But anyway, I put that out there for us to consider, maybe workshop or some other type of, I don't want to create a committee, but I do think that maybe a working group could kind of address this until it's dealt with sufficiently, which is something I would be strongly in favor of. The other thing with regard to the Transportation Advisory Committee, I was happy to participate in that last week. And I think that, you know, having some regular face time with NCDOT along with our staff is going to be a great thing for us. I'm an optimist, but I don't go into that with any, you know, ambitions that their timeline is going to agree with ours on certain things. But I think it's good that we have that regular face time with them. I do want to know kind of how we intend to share that, those findings, you know, from our quarterly meetings with the council. So maybe to give that some thought, and that's not something we necessarily did with tonight, but how we're going to relay those findings to the public and to council. Thirdly, I received a Facebook message this week from our local mail carrier who informed me of an issue that our postal workers are apparently encountered. And that is, with all the growth that we've experienced, it's forced them to take on additional mail carriers. And there's limited parking there at the post office. And so it's gotten to be a problem because there's not room for all the mail delivery vehicles and the workers' personal vehicles there in the space. And so there's been threats to tow cars that are parked along the urban street there. Carolines, I understand, is really not allowing the use of their parking spaces for postal employees. So they were simply asking, is it possible for the city to maybe negotiate some sort of permission for these businesses to allow some of their unused spaces to be used by postal workers? I don't know if that's anything we can consider or not. And then lastly, I'm just going to pass these diagrams around while I'm speaking of this final point. And thank you for your patience for this, and pass it down. I had a good friend who also happens to be a retired lieutenant colonel in the Army and Air Force, who made what I believe is a fantastic suggestion to recognize one of our hometown heroes. And that is Mr. Robert Stephen Kerner, private first class United States Army. He was a graduate of Belmont High School and was the first soldier from Belmont, killed in action in Vietnam on January thirteenth, nineteen sixty-seven. Keener Boulevard was actually named after him. And so my friend's suggestion is for the city to consider designing, ordering, and installing a monument or sign along the roadway that was actually named after him to honor this serviceman. Further, this monument or sign could be maintained, perhaps by Parks and Rec in coordination with American Legion and the VFW. They actually even offered up a mock design that you guys have in front of me now that, you know, could potentially be considered by council if we decide to vote on and approve that measure.
This came up.
I brought it up.
Marco brought this one?
Because this was in, this gentleman was in sand graduate class.
Yeah, my dad's too.
But no, thanks for bringing that up because I don't know what we did with that. Can we erect a mark, or does that require the A T's involvement?
It's in the right way that it would require a D A T. But they, they do have a program where they recognize certain people with those signs. It's quite simple.
Is it like white signs and like they strip me out?
Yeah, I could do some research to determine if we apply for something like that during NCDOT. What's that, what's that process look like? Sorry.
Officer Pullen and I talked about several different things. One, I very much appreciate that they're trying to work, removing all the trucks that are staying at Walmart for overnight. That I think it's better and still a part of working product, I'm sure. And I also talked about the Harris Teeter Chick-fil-A situation, National Call. I brought that up several months ago. One of the things these businesses are going to, businesses are having to decide is what they want. Because our officers offered to go immediately, but then Officer Pullen went. They didn't want to do anything. So if they want us, that's great, but they've got to figure out what they want our officers to do. So that's something we need to deal with. Downtown development, y'all did a great job. That was absolutely wonderful. It provided, it was taken for my husband, because he's a flutist, and I didn't realize what a good flutist they had. So that was great. We would also continue, they would have signs stolen. And so if we could put back out whatever we did before to remind people that they made criminal offense to steal campaign signs. The last thing is another worker on plaque situation. I had proposed, and we have not learned anything about it. We need to go ahead and put a plaque of whatever we think is appropriate for Trevor Gray for the skateboard car camper, Officer Carpenter, who was killed on his way to the scene in that particular situation. So we need to get an update on where we are with that to get that accomplished.
Approved, I remember it was.
I think you have to probably watch it, because that was during the city manager training.
We're working on the side right now.
Right, thank you.
Yes, again, thanks to the Main Street Board, Belmont Fire Department, Police Department, and volunteers. That was a good concert, I think we got a good crowd. Also, yeah, the cemetery, it's become an issue. I hope you all have gotten some calls on that. But the people mowing the cemetery, I got a call from a couple of citizens who were actually out there and upset because the mowers went over flowers, flags of veterans, et cetera. And, you know, you can imagine what kind of impact that happens to folks. One of the graves was their father, a weather veteran, who just happened to be there and watched the flowers and flag just get shredded. So, you know, from our perspective, I mean, I know they're trying to move fast, and time is money. But you're kind of in the middle of the cemetery, like we're mowing a standard yard. Certain amount of reverence has to be extended to this facility. And I think we need to impress that on whoever has that contract, is that we need to take some special care when you are mowing around these grave sites. I mean, it's not, these are our family, friends, relatives, and veterans out there. This is, this is not your standard mow, blow, and go kind of yard. So if we could have that conversation with them, I would appreciate it. The Parks and Rec Committee may address this, but again, a lot of parents have heard about the need for field space for soccer. Now, stove field, stove park, field is something that I'd like us to look at or ask them to kind of review and see if that is a good match for our programming, to take some of the pressure off our other facilities. One of the residents today was telling me they're having to have practices in like fields and other places. So we have that field. If it's appropriate, then that would be a good place to take some of the pressure off some of the programming. I did meet with Jason and Miles, we did go meet with the Division Twelve of the NCDOT last Monday. I am cautiously optimistic that we're going to make some progress with them. You know, we are trying to revamp our policy on speed home, success, and be a little more responsive and nimble. And I told them I would like you all to, as much as is possible, to also look at your processes and try to be a little bit more responsive and nimble as well. Because you're not dealing with the NCDOT, very structured, very monolithic. They want to study everything and duplicate. I mean, I understand it to some extent, but hopefully they'll take that to heart. We'd also discussed issues at Seventy-Four Park Street with the signals. They said they would keep Miles updated to the progress. We're having issues with the sensors in the road. Some of their software seems to be acting up, and they're working on it. So hopefully that'll resolve itself. Finally, at some point, if we get an update on the fire chiefs who are looking at the north station, and let, let's kind of find out where they are with that. I think that's coming to us in the next couple of months, I'm assuming, pretty soon. And that's everything I have.
Thank you. I, and perhaps you're going to address this, Mark. I was just hoping for some clarification regarding the amount that we got for water and sewer infrastructure in the state budget. That, that, I mean, it seemed too good to be true. I didn't know whether that was like part of, you know, we get a portion of that or whether we actually get all of that, or what, if there's any specific requirements for that.
My understanding, and Parks and Miles can direct me them off, but is that we just have to spend, it's ten million dollars on water and sewer projects. Is that, is that your mark for the connection fee to the stove facility, the? There was no language over the budget that I saw that restricted. It just said water and sewer. So. How much, do we remember how much, or Miles, do you remember off the top of your head? There was a significant amount of money, obviously not as significant as redoing the wastewater facility, but wasn't there some type of amount that we had to put up, August of two to ten million?
It was crazy.
Yeah, that's right.
It's ten million.
Ten million, so.
But that's funded with S R F one.
Oh, so, okay, so that's already funded. That's like a one percent loan or something, right? Yeah, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
Do we get a fire truck too?
So. That's what they told, that's what Representative Loftus told me initially. But there was a lot of, I think, stuff that happened in the background in terms of the whole.
Oh, so they mixed it?
That I did not see in there unless I missed it.
I looked through the entire, two documents, all the certificates. Those are both.
Would you guys ask and clarify that, because that would be like the.
Yeah, I, yeah, I did follow some of that. I will make a note to check in with him on that. The trolley was definitely in there for a million bucks, and then the water and sewer was in there for ten.
I have a request that you guys could have pulled it up for about one point five in water and sewer projects.
So they, I guess, moved the decimal point there.
But, you know, I think we might have talked about the other project, but yeah.
Now, can we mention on the trolley, one million dollars for the trolley? Is there certification for that, or did?
No, the trolley board.
The trolley board did, but I believe there was some conversation with actually with Tim Moore. Was it there, I believe, or something like that with the trolley project?
Does that obligate us in any way to use those, well, I guess to?
How even they were going to get those funds?
Yeah. Yeah, go straight to the trolley.
Yeah. Sorry, I did not need that.
Oh, no, I wanted some clarification on that, so that's good. Just some other odds and ends. Thanks to our co-enforcement officer, Lindsay Yeager. She's been busy looking for and finding some violations in both the Reed neighborhood. And there was some issues up in North Belmont along Acme Road with a potential homeless encampment and maybe some nefarious activity going on that they. encampment and maybe some, some nefarious activity going on that they've been up there and hope to have that under control. Speeding, I've, I've heard some speeding concerns along both Eagle Road and the Key Farm, and this was, I literally got this less than an hour ago. I've also received some complaints about construction vehicles. I, I know there's some construction going on in McLean South Shore Phase Two, that construction vehicles are going into the South Shore neighborhood and speeding and endangering children, so if somebody can take a look at that, and I know that sometimes happens. I remember when they were building Town Square and Laurel Village, we had some of that go on in Stowe Point, but just to remind them, what, you know, not to speed and whether they're supposed to be in that neighborhood at all, I'm, I'm not sure. Let's see, I've also had some complaints about people running the red light at Eagle and Main, that intersection. Jason brought up a good point about the problems that we're having after school at the town center. I think we should also keep in mind that I've heard complaints from people in South Point Bridge, on the other side of the street, they're having issues after school too with people, you know, parking up everywhere to pick up their kids on that side of the street, people speeding. So I would just hope that any action that we take, any consideration that we have for that issue also, you know, realizes that there's problems on the other side of the street too and, and, you know, takes that into account as well. I agree with those that praised the Soundtracks Festival and the concert and all the efforts of everyone to put that together. It sounds like it went off quite well, there were no safety problems, I think there might have been one allergic reaction to jalapeno peppers, but beyond that, it sounds like everything went, went smoothly, so that was a great event. And then the last thing, I've also had some, some concerns again about, and we've talked about this yard waste pickup and, you know, driving by, you get, you know, called out to one area and then driving by a bunch of other bundles because you were, you know, they were called out to one and then just passing others, but I think I've talked to Bill about that and I, in my, did you say that the goal is to like go to a route system soon, which would, I think, alleviate a lot of those problems?
I don't know if Bill's the right word.
Was that an aspiration?
So, yeah, your reference again email that Jim had sent me, and we've seen this complaint a few times, and I know we've had a conversation about it. So we are hopefully getting some financing very soon for some additional equipment. I think maybe it would be good for us in the, maybe January retreat, discuss yard waste and routing and what that would look like. And with the additional equipment we'll hopefully be getting around that time, then we can have a bigger discussion about whether or not a route is appropriate now that we've got the equipment, or at that time have the equipment. So certainly, at the end of the day, the city councils, you know, direction about how we serve yard waste, so if the request system is not the direction we want to take, we can certainly move and alter, you know, ultimately to what makes sense for the town.
Well, is the problem equipment or just adherence to policy? Because I've seen that on my street too, where I will call it in, neighbors on either side, they drive right by and leave it. And I mean, I know there was some talk about trying to educate the public, but to me, if we have to go back twice, we're just burning that much more fuel to try to correct behavior.
Sure, and that, that's where the discussion on routing makes sense, because if we're gonna just pick up everything we pass anyways, then we should probably just have a route system. So it's, you know, the, the reason we wanted to avoid that in the beginning was just because of the cost of running a truck through, you know, communities that don't have yard waste, but at the end of the day, I think it, it does make sense as, as the town become, retreats or retreats mature more and new developments coming on, on board and with the equipment we'll be getting, there can be that discussion about whether or not we transition to a route system and see how that looks for the community and if it makes sense. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we're providing a good service, we're meeting the needs of the residents, and if the request system's not meeting those needs, then we can adjust some in a different direction.
Thank you.
Well, Jim, you took a lot off my list. Ten million, I was very curious about that, me and Jim talked about that on the phone today, so I would be curious to understand the parameters of that. Again, thank you, everybody, volunteers, our boards, businesses and obviously public or, or first responders for the concert, I mean, I think it was exceptional and I don't know, I heard, was it four thousand plus?
It takes a few days for us to really.
Understand them.
Collect the data from the geofencing, so.
But it was, from my opinion, well attended and I think it was really well executed as well, so good job to everyone, again, Jim's comment, doesn't sound like any major public safety issues or anything like that. Tiffany, I do want to also thank you and your staff and your team and the planning zoning board for presenting all of that information. I know even for us, kind of a little confusing, right, with all these text amendments and what should we do and what shouldn't we do, so I do appreciate that. But again, I'm going to reiterate again, I really do think that we do need a joint workshop session with the planning and zoning board. Here recently, it does seem like we do have very conflicting ideas, which is okay, this is a free thinking world and that's what the advisory board is for and that's why we're elected to council, but I think it might be prudent to try to understand each other's side and to try to have maybe kind of hopefully a productive conversation with that group, so, again, that's just my two cents on that, if we get council's consensus, that would be great. Only other thing is, I had also heard, Jim brought it up, and Richard also alluded to it, the trash cleanup, or excuse me, the waste pickup. My father-in-law has reached out to me and other people I know that they have had similar situations where there is a pile on the side of the street and the car drove, the truck goes right past them and it's not picked up, or there have been some situations where he'll call, which now I understand he was not in compliance with what he had out there sometimes. But there are certain situations where I think either the routing system would probably be a better use or better service for the citizens, because that seems to be a reoccurring issue that pops up. No fault to Bill, it's just not what our current capabilities are, so, again, that's, that's, that's all I have.
All right. Not to be the dead worst, but Soundtracks was great. We've gotten really good at executing on large events like that. You guys make it look easy, I know it's not, but thank you for that. Went to the mayor's lunch last week with Miles, which was very interesting, just kind of hearing what's going on around the county. I think a couple of people thought it was the intern, but that's okay.
Were you the youngest person there or the youngest there?
Probably, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, actually, it's funny, going back to Soundtracks, went to the governor's tent and got carded. Oh, okay, well.
I knew there were a lot worse than that.
So we trained, we trained our volunteers right.
Yeah, they're, they're a A-plus job on that, so, yes.
When I started as a law professor, I'd get in the elevator and the students would ask me, what, are you a, what year are you, are you a one L? And I go, I'm in my second year as a professor. And they're just, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Good problem to have. And what else I got? Yeah, so the mayor's lunch and then, oh, one request for the council, I would like to move the November meeting, which is currently scheduled for the night before Election Day, to the following Monday. I've talked this over with staff and our thought here is to combine the meeting that would normally occur before Election Day with the workshop that would normally occur the week of Thanksgiving into one meeting on the thirteenth and just take care of whatever business we need to take care of that month, hopefully accommodating everyone's schedules, because I know there are four, you're running.
It doesn't matter to me.
Oh, yeah, you're.
It, it concerns me because my response will take on people's business up until the date, but whatever happens, happens. So I'm, I'm not particularly thinking that would be the direction I'd like to go.
I tend to agree with that. I, we've always had that meeting the night before the election and included, we voted on some big ticket items even the night before the election and I, I just, I think that the, the reaction to that, doing that, might be, there might be some pullback to that. I would be fine having the meeting as regularly scheduled.
Miles, can we make it as long as possible?
I mean, we did, we did Chronicle Mill and the warehouses the night before the election in twenty nineteen, and they did, I think, Abicwell the night before the election in twenty seventeen, so.
You know, are there any simple plans?
No, I know, that's why I didn't anticipate it being an issue, because I don't know that we're planning on doing anything big at that meeting, purely a scheduling combination, but.
I'm fine with it.
Well, if we do that, are we interested in giving the workshop three days before Thanksgiving or whatever it is?
Then that's, well, I think we could either forego or move to the day. Do we have a, a specific agenda for that November workshop?
Is that, that board?
These are an odd set of other. We do have.
Workshop that has most on it right now is the November workshop.
I mean, if that's the case, we might just cancel the November workshop, though. I mean, we'll see.
Okay.
I guess we'll.
Canceling November workshop or to be?
Well, to be determined, there's no calendar for now, and then we can, we can decide at the November meeting what we want to do.
Technically, we, so if we can kind of have an idea, if we have to amend the, the meeting schedule, at least seven days prior, so if we're going to cancel it.
Well, they'll have seven days prior, they keep it regularly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, we'll just add it. I guess we can add it as a discussion item then, to put it on there.
I think we know by then whether we have anything that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Hopefully we do that.
All right, well, that was all I have.
We're not done.
Yeah, I would move to go into closed session in pursuit to, in my general statute, one forty-three, eighteen, eleven, eight, four, five, and include Matt Brokaw, Donnie Hicks and Kevin Kraus to discuss item one.